Hi, good evening or good afternoon. Welcome to the Village of Americ, Board of Trustees Work Session. We're starting early. We're going to get an update on the budget from the village manager. And then we're going to talk about priorities of the board for the budget in the coming year. I need a motion to open this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. Barbario, would you like to start the parade?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I prepared something. Let me just silence my three phones. So as, as, as everyone knows on this Zoom regarding staff and the Board of Trustees, tonight's meeting was requested by several members as a big picture meeting to kick off the budget season. We have been working on the budget internally with staff and department heads for some time now, actually right after the beginning of the year. And I'm happy to report that staff and department heads have completed the draft budget for the 2022-2023 budget season. In fact, we're ready to present on March 18th, probably the best budget that the Board of Trustees has seen in recent years. And I want to explain a little bit as to why. But I need to go back a little bit. The challenges we faced during the last two years with the pandemic, I hope is a once in a lifetime challenge for us in municipal government. We've had to enact workplace changes. We had to make adjustments to keep staff safe while the essential and non-essential services were maintained at the same level as best we could. And on top of that, climate change and Mother Nature threw two significant additional disasters our way. Tropical Storm Asaius and Hurricane Ida, which created, in my opinion, probably the perfect scenario of challenges that required leadership and staff to work harder than we ever have before. However, from that challenge, we learned how to become more efficient. We've accepted double and sometimes triple our responsibilities and became a more cohesive management team with our eye on one goal, to provide safe and the best services we could for the residents of the community. Financially, we are on a significant high. In fact, we've added 2.7 million to the surplus from last year. The auditor's next meeting will tell us that. Not only is our budget presentation going to give the board approximately $550,000, which is what we are under the cap to introduce new quality of life improvements, but we're also adding back many important items. Augie, I have a little PowerPoint I want to share. Am I good? Let me try it. You see that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Let's go with the slideshow. All right. So, so this is tonight's big picture discussion, or at least kicking off the big picture discussion. In our budget, which has, as I said, $550,000 of flex under the cap, we are adding back a village engineer and increasing the staff with an assistant village engineer to help us manage the Army Corps project and the almost $6 million in grants that we received in the last few months. I have been managing, as everyone knows, the sewer project with the help of Mark Ferraro, James Barney and Mike Onorelli. And we're doing a great job with that. But now with the Army Corps project and with all of the other money that we're receiving as far as grant money, we need, we need help. And so this budget includes a village engineer and an assistant village engineer. It also returns a full-time director of planning to help manage the workload in that office and to assist the Board of Trustees so that the Board of Trustees can call upon a planner instead of using a consulting planner, which is a significant cost. We're bringing back an assistant building inspector to the building department. We had downsized to a part-time assistant building inspector during the pandemic, but we're bringing that back in this budget to a full-time position. We're adding a part-timer to the two-person HR department. HR has done an incredible job with, with the department head Danielle Gillyard and the senior clerk there, Marie DeFury. But the work that's required needs, they need additional staff. And so we're putting in a part-timer. We also created, which was a discussion I had many months ago with the board, a dedicated Village of Americ emergency management team, which is comprised of mostly staff and a few volunteers. I will require monthly training. Of course, I'll take the monthly training with them to handle all disaster situations that the climate change presents or throws at us. But also it's a group team effort of training together during, during the entire year so that we're always ready and available for the next Ida, which I hope never comes. Our budget also includes $22,000 in new police reform and reinvention initiatives such as training and community connection platform. We have absorbed in this budget a 13% increase in health costs, which is not in our control. We have increased road salt by 25% because road salt has gone up. We've also increased our trash tipping fees by 15%, all included in this budget. This is not to come in the future. This is already put in, in place. We also had a 33% combined increase in workman's comp and flood general liability insurance for obvious reasons. They really, they really hit us pretty hard with that. We're budgeting for increased training and contract services for our finance department. Our workman's comp 207C consulting and guidance is included in the budget. The fire chief, to his credit, has added more fire response and protective equipment as well as radios. We have a 40% increase for park maintenance equipment, but only for electric mowers and power tools. 13%, I'm sorry, that's just from the, from the previous page. We have expanded our summer day, summer camp program to include more people. And we are returning the 50% discount for the the staff, employees of the village, as well as the volunteers. Our spray ground will be open the entire summer season, not just on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. We have increased our marine education programs by 30%. And we're adding improvements to our docks, which everyone knows. But some of those costs are included in the general budget. All of that. And we're still under the cap by $546,543. That's my big picture. That's what the staff has been doing for the past few months. Because things are turning around and projections such as sales tax are going to continue to improve. In fact, I think we're conservative on the projection for sales tax. So on, forgive me, I think it's March 30th is when we have our first budget discussion. And our budget looks fantastic this year. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, Jerry, so the main driver of this generous budget that keeps taxes stable is, is, is sales tax revenue?
Sales tax revenue helps. The other thing that helps is that we had a 24% decrease in pension costs because our controller really knows what they're doing. Or that staff knows what they're doing. We've had also other increases such as, we know from the information we got from MTA and the information that we're getting almost every day now, that people are going to be required to return to work. And so that means that they're going to have to drive their car to our parking lots, get our parking permits. Other things that are in the budget, I didn't go into detail because I didn't want this to be a full-blown budget meeting. But this is the big picture presentation that we can offer you in under 15 minutes.
That is a nice picture. I think that's the best picture I've had since I've been elected official. Does anybody?
Just one thing, John from Zen City. Okay, yeah, thanks. Yeah, just, we'll, we'll get to you later.
Yeah, come back after five.
Okay, perfect. I thought, excellent. Have a good, have a good meeting.
See you soon. Thank you. Thank you. Enjoy yourself. Before I get started, does anybody on the Board of Trustees have any initiatives or things they want to see put in the budget or taken out of the budget?
Mr. Young, always. Yeah, they're, in talking with the staff earlier, I, I, I've been told that there was a a river maintenance fund at some point that was done away with. Seemed to be a very poor, well, whatever. I, I think we should get back to that and we should start cleaning, cleaning and lowering that river on our own and not wait for the Army to do it, Army Corps to do it for us. We should be getting ready to, 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 to manage what they, what they do. And we're, it's going to cost us money, but we should do it. I mean, that, that, those rivers are in terrible shape. They're too shallow. They got clogged with, with debris and, and whatever. That's what I'd like to see. Whatever money we pull out, I'd like to put it aside for that.
Okay, that's, that's what I do. We can discuss that when we get to the budget hearings. Can, can we look at what that number used to be and where it was?
Right now? No, no, absolutely, Mayor. I can get it.
Don't go anywhere. Anybody else besides me?
I mean, go ahead, Dan.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I actually, I don't think it was a, a fund. I think it was like a budget item and that it got pulled out. And I think that that's, in the short term, not a smart thing to have done. And I also think that there's a lot of adjacent to the river that's still there from, on private property that's still flooded during Ida that hasn't been removed. So there are junk cars. There's still junk in the river. And that, I think we should think about seeing if we can remove it unless it's too, I mean, we have to remove it. But whether it's something that can be captured in some of the funds we're recapturing from Ida? Because it's, it's people with, who've got stuff that's flooded on private property that are just junk cars waiting.
So Nora, this is FEMA's rule. If they put it to the right of way, or if it's in the right of way, we can remove it. They won't pay for anything that's on private property. So if anyone has material like that and they get somehow to move it to the right of way, we are forced to take it away and FEMA will reimburse us for it.
Are we allowed, I mean?
They're not allowed to go on private property. That's the problem.
Do we have any ability to prevent or to require people to get rid of essentially abandoned vehicles on private property? That's, that's, you know, within, I mean, 50 or 100 feet of the river?
I don't know. I don't know if we specifically have that. Dan, do you know if we have that?
Well, we have, we have the property maintenance code. And I think there are things, I think you, there's something about having an unregistered vehicle on private property. I, it's been a while since I've looked at that. But as far as the funding that trustee Young mentioned, I, my recollection is that it was $110,000 split between two items. I think it was $55,000 for, we would call bank casting, not dredging, because that's a, that's a dirty word for certain people. And I think it was another $55,000 for catch basis. And now we have the, we can do that in-house, but I believe it was, I believe it was $110,000. But Augie can confirm that tomorrow.
Trustee.
Yeah, Jerry, very, very interesting presentation. I would have loved to have beforehand, but some of the things that came up is in terms of the different positions you're bringing back or adding. We had asked for some cost analysis versus what we were doing versus if we put personnel in. So when we get to that, it would be helpful to have that analysis.
And it's most analysis? As far as compared to the consultants?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's what we asked for. It would be helpful to put it in perspective, you know, what we were paying, you know, what would, you know, what, how much of that would not reoccur if we had a full-time, you know, planner, et cetera? The full-time village attorney, I believe, should be in the budget and as opposed to how we are today.
What number would that be?
Just as a point, just as a point of information.
If it is, it wasn't, it was not.
Put it in, we put it in the budget last year.
Okay, let me ask you. Is that in the budget? Is that in your proposed budget, Jerry?
You got to give me some time to look it up. Because we have a payment for the village attorney, which would be reduced if there was a full-time.
While he's looking, that, that's, when you get the information, let us know. But I know we did put it in last year. I don't know if it survives.
Tom?
Yeah?
I have one more comment.
Go ahead, Nora.
So, um, it's great that we've gotten all of these grants. But I'm wondering if it might be more prudent to hire an interim project manager so that we're not, you know, adding staff that we might not need after these grants are completed, whether we could do it on a project management basis. So we're not, you know, putting in a situation where we are hiring more staff and having, you know, more benefits and more health and more that for, for, for projects that might not be long-term. Just think, I just, you know, like evaluating.
I hear what you're saying, but I think what we also should look at is if other communities are size, how do they handle engineering? How do they handle planning? Because I, I, I think that, you know, a community of 20,000 people to not have a resident engineer might not be the best course. But I see what you're saying. They also want that to be part of project analysis, too.
I think it's, because if it's not somebody we're going to need for more than two or three years, maybe we don't want to have, create a position and then eliminate a position versus having someone who just does it on a project basis.
Discussion in.
For trustee Natchez, we took out 165,000 for full-time village engineer and we added 165,000 to retainer agreement attorney. So there's 165,000. Doesn't matter what line it's in. It's in the budget.
Okay. So I have a question. Go ahead. So if that 165, that means if we get an attorney, we don't get an engineer? No. Okay, okay, great. There are things that I would like to see into the budget and I'll, I'll talk about my reasoning. We give out camp scholarships every year. Cost of camp, we did, we canceled our camp scholarships. We didn't give them out. The cost of camp has gone up. Although we have an affordable camp, we have a population where a lot of children live below the poverty line. And even though it seems like a bargain to some of us that are better healed, I know of a lot of parents who can't afford to send two kids to camp, let alone, you know, three. So I'd like to see the camp scholarship program at least tripled. I think it was around $7,500, $8,000. I mean, I'd like to see that go to like $25,000. That will have a direct impact on children in this community who really need a hand and parents who need a place for their children that's safe and fun for the summer. You know, we have kids going back to school that sat in apartments all summer. And we're lucky to get out one or two times to something special. And, you know, they're, they're with their classmates, some of whom, you know, spent the summer in the Hamptons. It, it makes for very hard conversations come September. And I think that, that, that's the least you could offer a kid is a little bit of fun during the summer. So that's one thing I'd like to talk about during budget time is vastly increasing that to serve those that really need a break in this community.
I have 8,000 in scholarships that we do.
It's 8,000? Okay, I forgot whether it was 7,500 or 8,000. So I'd like to see.
What did you say? I wasn't listening. What do you want to bring it to?
25 grand?
Okay.
And the other thing is trees. We have a tree budget. I'd like to at least double the tree budget. You know, we have the money. If we don't do it now, it's never going to get done. And you're all smart people. You're all well-read people. You know what's going on in the world. You know, this is the least we can do to try and stem the effects of global warming. And it'll also help with the flooding in this community. And it also helps the aesthetics of the community and the livability of the community. So I'd like to see that at least doubled. What, what's our tree budget now, Terry?
30. And then we added 42,000 for large tree pruning, street trees.
I'm just talking about buying trees.
30.
I'd like to see that go like 60. Because the price of trees has gone up too.
I, I can say, I, I can say without conferring with the tree committee to whom I am liaison, that that would be very well accepted by the tree committee.
If it makes them happy, I'm happy.
They have, they have, they have broached an idea. And I think it's, it's a, it's a good idea. But to try and create a nursery in the village where seedlings are planted to get big enough to offset the cost of purchasing trees. And it's, it's something that they're exploring. And, you know, I don't know if it's, no one knows whether it's feasible or not now, but the idea would be there would be a piece of property in the village that seedlings could be planted on. They would rely on the use of volunteers to try and water maintain. And they'd get to a point where instead of having to buy expensive trees, we'd be able to transplant those. Don't know if that's even feasible, but that's something that they're considering. And I also think the pruning is something we've been deficient in. And that is one of the reasons we may have lost more trees. So, you know, is, as important as it is to plant trees, it's also important to maintain the trees that we have. And we have not been great at doing that.
Three to five-year trees, we can maintain. It's the large trees that we just don't have the equipment and the coverage and the, the skill.
I actually wasn't that. I'd also like to see more money put into walking safety improvements. We could talk about how that would manifest itself. But, you know, I, I've seen a lot of different communities have different machinations of signs and both for speeding and for stop signs to make the stop signs more prevalent and more noticeable, especially at night. And I'd like to talk to, you know, the traffic consultant about, you know, increasing that and how we, if we spent the money, what would be the best way to spend it? You know, we all, we, we, we all had an email this morning about a harrowing experience. One of our residents had walked her child to school. And you know, we, we, we've had fatalities in the village recently. The gentleman from Americ Avenue was killed over the summer. So I think it behooves us to do everything we can to make this as safe as we can make it. And, you know, there's money to do it. We have money. We have a growing fund balance. We have almost a zero tax increase. You know, if we don't keep residents safe, you know, then that's, that's going to be on us when, God forbid, someday somebody has a more serious accident with a child or, you know, you, you all know where I'm going with this. And I don't want to jinx us.
Can I, can I ask a question too about that? Are you talking about? I know you're talking about the walking safety surveys and, and that we created, but adding money for a traffic consultant under contract services is easy. We can do that now in this budget because there's so much flex. But some of those improvements can cost, just like Fennemore and Prospect's going to cost between $88,000 and $100,000. So are you saying to absorb those costs in this general or?
No, 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 no. That's not what I was saying. I wasn't talking about capital projects.
Okay.
I wasn't talking about like the sidewalk that needs to be put on Old Post Road. I wasn't talking about that. I was talking about, and, and I'll get into it more at another time. But, you know, a lot of communities have no, you know, we have the big speed mobility trailers and they're great and they serve a real purpose. But a lot of communities now have the, the little square ones that get mounted on a pole. And they're ubiquitous in some of these communities. And, you know, they tell you your speed and it says, hey, it gives you like a real-time message. Hey, slow down. Oh, you're under the speed limit. You're doing great. And it's, it's really, the technology has really took a big jump in the next few years.
Yep.
And there, I've seen these stop signs that at night have a ring of light around them. And they're, you know, they're on a battery that's solar powered. And they have a ring of light around them so that you see the stop sign from, you know, an extra 100 yards away before you get there. And there's no saying you didn't see the stop sign. So just things like, and I'm not just saying that in, in and of itself. I mean, I'd like to talk to the consultant to get his advice on, you know, what is the most effective and efficient way of doing that. But those are just some of the ideas I'm throwing out that, you know, to make this community safer.
I think the concept is good, you know, a good concept. I, I think we also, I mean, we've talked about lots of capital improvement projects, but we don't seem to be moving very fast on them. Old Post Road is a sidewalk is a good example. And we're not coordinated because part of it was supposed to include the McDonald's property, which just went through a site approval. But the request for having a sidewalk there somehow rather disappeared. So we better coordinated in, in that. And I think my concern would be the emphasis of undertaking the, the projects, which are really costly. In trying to move them forward as a, you know, a very significant priority.
So I, I think that demonstrates the deficiency that we have as, without a director of planning as well as a village engineer. And I know that some board members are concerned about adding staff, but we're not adding staff. We're returning staff to what it was in the past before we had to gut the budget because we had this once-in-a-lifetime pandemic coming our way. And I think that kind of coordination, Dan, Dan Sarnoff and I can't handle that from in our office because we have so much, so many other things going on. But if that, if that was a village engineer and a director of planning focused on that, that would have easily, that would have easily been taken care of. And I'm sorry that I didn't even know that it was dropped in that. Because now it's, you know, it's, it's probably a difficult position.
Mr., to the trustee Natchez's point, I just want to, Dan, I think you're right. I think those are important. The, the capital projects that you talked about.
Yeah.
But the stuff I'm talking about in the budget is not a capital project. It, it is more hardware to be installed in, in the village. And just, Jerry, as, as, when do we think that the Prospect and Fennemore project is going to start?
We can get, as soon as we find out what the schedule is, when we have the the contractors from, from Scarsdale, as soon as we see what their schedule is, we'll be, we'll be able to get them there. Because we're doing the piggyback, right, Dan? We're doing that piggyback?
That, that's our goal. But as far as the, the actual specs, the, we, they're being prepared by AKRF. We reviewed them as a staff. I would say, was it the week before last, Jerry?
Yeah, it was two weeks. Yeah, it was two weeks ago now.
Yeah, it was myself, Jerry, police, fire department. I think I can't recall if you were there, Mayor, but we've gotten our comments to AKRF and they're finalizing the specs on that. Just as a total aside, a lot of the projects that we've had them working on as far as conceptual plans for sidewalks in various locations. I did ask for capital budget estimates, so I can present that to the board with the, with the capital budget. And I actually just sent an email to the mayor and I copied Jared up some questions on hardware recommendations that I had asked for at the beginning of February. So you read my mind.
Jerry, in, in terms of the number of people that we are quote bringing back, would be helpful to have an analysis of what the is that you're proposing in terms of its dollars, how much is being increased in terms of bringing back or adding additional staff? What the major differences are and how it's been made, being made up? So you have a real feel of the numbers and whether, you know, whether these are one-time approaches or continual approaches. You know, nobody has crystal ball, but obviously you've done some thinking about that in preparing the budget. It'd be helpful to share that with the board.
So that'll all be, that'll all be reflected in the, in the revenue projections, of course. But as I said, there's five hundred and almost five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in flex in the budget that we're ready to present to board of trustees. So there's a lot of reduction of revenue and increasing of spending to get to that sweet spot that we're all looking for.
I'm appreciative of that, but I'm not looking necessarily for line items. I'm looking for, you know, totals in, you know, this is attributed to that, et cetera. Where, where, as you made a quick analysis of some of it is coming from the sales tax, some of it is coming from the reduced pension, et cetera. I'd like to see all that, you know, in big picture approach so that we really understand, you know, how much we're increasing the budget by is coming from in relation to our ongoing programs.
You, you will have, so I, you'll have what we're increasing the budget by as far as projections. You'll have what we're increasing the budget by as far as expenses. It all becomes lumped into one pot as far as revenue because revenues are combined for the village. And expenses should be and can be justified by us. For instance, if I'm asking for staff to be returned, like a village engineer and a planner, it's my job, it's my task to justify to the board on why we need these individuals to come back. I can't attribute the increase in revenue in parking that we're projection, projecting to a line item and expense. I can't do that because that's not how we think. That's not how we put the budget together.
That's not what I was asking for, Jerry.
Okay, okay.
What I'm suggesting is, you started off in answer to the question, you know, in your presentation that we're bringing back so many people and adding so many people. That's, that comes up to a total dollar figure. Whatever it is, okay? You know, that the sales tax, you know, seems to be X dollars more than what was projected.
Okay.
So we have a relative idea of the numbers, not trying to assign a specific revenue to a specific expense, but taking a look at the total approaches to life. You know, and so that we can have some idea of what the juggling is, is and how it is being done. So we have, we can be on the same page with what that we can look at it on a micro basis, which what you have done on a micro, in the macro or the other way around, excuse me.
Yeah, macro to micro.
You've done on a micro basis and we do it on a macro basis.
And we can provide that to the board by next week, by the end of next week, no problem, because we've already done it. Yeah.
Jerry, what would help me? I mean, what Dan suggests, I, I, I understand and that's fine. But what would help me too would be, you know, the positions that you're putting back. If staff, and, and you know, there's the dollars and cents issue. Okay, so let's put that on one side. But I'd also like an operational narrative of why this would be an improvement to the operation of the community. How, you know, things would function better if, you know, we hired ABC employee.
Sure. It'll, I'll be able to, I'll be able to provide that and it'll be more than just, I don't want to do the engineer's job anymore type of thing. No, 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 no. No problem. We can provide that.
I want it to be, you know, explained in a functionality way.
Yeah, of course. That's more than fair. Absolutely. And we'll, and I'll work on that to make sure that that's clear in a memo to the board regarding the budget.
Okay, thank you.
It would also be, I'm sorry.
I think we can all see why you don't want to keep doing the engineer's job. By the way, I think that's not, you know, that's not, that's very reasonable.
It's more than I'm not an engineer.
Yeah, in part, right. But you just play one on TV. But I, you know, I know Village Hall's pretty crowded and I know we're putting people back, but there is that territorial imperative where if there's an empty space, it gets filled. So is, is there going to be, you know, are there going to be space adjustments that we have to consider too with this? Or are we going to be able to squeeze in?
There won't be, there won't be space adjustments for the people that were returning. They may have a smaller office than they, than the engineer used to have in the past. But other than that, there won't be spatial issues. We already have them allotted.
Okay, thanks.
I think it's all, would also be very helpful to share this with the budget committee as we go.
Who's, who's liaison to the budget committee now?
Tom, right?
Yeah. Okay, okay. So you let me know when the next meeting is and I can, whatever I give the board, you know the rule, you know my rule, right? Whatever I give the board, I can give to the budget committee after. So no problem there.
It's their first, their meetings are always the first ones of the month unless they've changed that.
Okay.
I'll take care of it.
Okay.
We have a member watching right now.
Okay, good. So whatever I provide to the board of trustees, I'll share with the budget committee.
Victor, go ahead. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Jerry, for the presentation. I hear you're going to send it to us.
Yeah.
And in order to produce that, you know, view, and I think you have in a way preempted part of this conversation, which I'm not, not complaining about it. I think it's great. You have a clear vision. But in order to produce that presentation, you said you're, you're almost ready to go. You have, you have those racks. You have, you have, you have the budget ready. So I, I think instead of waiting for four, three weeks, I could, I would benefit by digesting it slowly and then have real questions. So if you could provide it to us earlier in a very draft form, you know, one that, that it'll help, it'll help tremendously. So, so, so that's number one. Number two, I do think the conversation is, is missing those capital improvements. I've been here long enough to see a lot of great ideas and very few really get to the ground, not because anybody's fault, other than the cycle of government is so difficult. I do think we're in a good place in that moment now. As many of you have mentioned, to try to nail those, really nail those to see some, some of those discussions. I think Nora just was tying the, the spaces. We're having tremendous problems with, with offices, with the, with the village hall, with the offices. And this is, this is the opportunity really to look at that as grants are coming. The things are kind of falling in place, the, the Army Corps of Engineers project, engineering, everything is. So this actually then, and because of the work of the last couple of years, the conversation on capital can be very, can be very focused. And in order for it to be effective, it has to go earlier or after we see. It can only be productive if we see this presentation that you have with a very draft budget that we will all respect if you change things by the time you told us you were committed to us in, I think it's March eighteenth. But by digesting it now, really will give, give me that, that, that vision of then what is, where you can put not the money and sense, but the big bucks. And then, and I, I, and both can be as impactful on citizens' residents and not, and not pointing at anything or suggesting anything different that, that everything has to be addressed in context. So, so if that can be provided, as you said, like in a week or the end of this week.
I, I want to reinforce something that you said, Victor. We're ready to give you the budget because we're comfortable with the numbers. We're comfortable with the process. We're comfortable with everything that we've done. We're ready to hand it off to the board of trustees in a draft pre, pre discussion form so that the trustees, which is one of the main, in my opinion, one of the main jobs that you do, is to overview, oversee the budget, I mean, look the budget over and take a look to see what numbers may be a little uncertain as you look at them. We're ready to do that. I'm ready tonight to be able to do that. I will go over with Augie and Laura and Dan. I'm off tomorrow. I have to be in court in Long Island. But on Wednesday, we'll make time, go over it and get it to you. No problem. Completely confident in the budget that we're presenting.
That's terrific. It'll be a work document between, between the village manager and the board of trustees. So that can be, that is, that is terrific. Because then the next step is, the next question is, we, I, maybe I'm wrong, but did we really nail a meeting on capital? Projects, capital? Plan, did we nail that?
Thirty, right? I think it's the thirtieth.
Yeah, we, we did that.
I think it's the thirtieth, Victor, but I don't have it in front of me. I shouldn't have it in front of me. But what I haven't done is I haven't worked with staff on the capital budget because we've been so focused on the general budget. So we'll transition to the capital budget, get ready for that meeting. And that'll be the, that'll be the full meeting for capital.
We move ahead with this other very, I mean, the main components and then, we said it's March, it's March thirtieth?
It is March thirtieth, yes. March, March thirtieth. So we'll be ready, we'll be ready for capital discussion on March thirtieth. Where we'll have the same format that we've had in the past. All of the budget sheets that were developed by department heads that Lou Young has just learned about the last week. And that big, that big book, Lou, that what we're talking about, that big book, capital that we gave you. All those, all those budget sheets that we gave you. And we'll be ready for the thirtieth, Victor.
Here's our proposal, and this goes, this is also from experience. Sometimes we get to discuss a certain department. But we don't discuss the capital projects that relate to that. And then we, then we discuss capital projects as a whole, which is great in a big context. But we have not had the chance to discuss or have that very specific discussion of how it fits in the, in the village's work. So if we could have some of those, it doesn't have to be anything sophisticated. Just a reference even to something old that as we, as we look at areas of the village and we discuss them in the budget or departments, discuss the capital projects that go with it. For example, hopefully it works. Yes, we can do, even, even if it's, if we dedicate some time organized so to some of those tech ticket, you know, big ticket items that require us. Because then you, you, once you have, you, you have the department is capable to do that, then you can tie in that project or not. We're caught in this wheel. And again, not fault of anybody is the wheel of a budget. So, and it happens in many projects and other work I do that you need to work also how I'm going to implement this. But if you're just looking at the department, you know, looking at what you're going to do, then you get lost caught there. You have all the good intentions, but plugging them requires that connection. So even some documents, some very brief explanation of what capital items, what projects go with each, that would be very, very helpful as we guys move along.
So, so the reason, the reason I'm anxious to reintroduce the capital budget is because the capital budget has been significantly reduced. The fact that the federal government has taken our seven point eight million dollars out of the capital budget for the Army Corps project, which was our previous commitment. And the grant that we received, the, the capital budget is actually going down. In addition to that, we're purchasing items so that the capital budget is being reduced. I want to give you a fresh new spreadsheet. But Augie and Laura can easily redistribute to all the board members last year's, last year's spreadsheet to take a look at those priority projects that you want to grab and, and talk about. If that's what you want to do.
As, as we're digesting the village, then you can see, so it will be very beneficial. And then the Army Corps is a good example because actually the budget committee was telling us always, why are you putting that up there? It's really, it has to be the federal government then. And they were, they were actually right. But one more thing that I see trustee Natch is asking more is, is I, I focus on one set of priorities as you review the project and we all discuss these. And it's, it's no coincidence or you may see whatever, is, is all the issues that have been brought to our attention for years and very recently on, on the, on the Washingtonville area. And actually, I, I mentioned it separately the other day as we were discussing those, the ERPO funds on, on, on doing some of that stormwater management, water flow analysis of where, because it's, it's, it's another, we were talking about not having another, another flood problem. But if it would strike today, it strikes now or in April, we have the same drainage problem.
Yeah, we have the same.
We, we, so we really, you know, I can't leave this special moment to, to, to do something about it. And, and other issues, I'm not going to highlight it all, but I would say that area of the village and one or two priorities of each area of the village, because maybe some of the heights has some issues, some kind of key issues of each area would need to be addressed and integrated into, into our budget so that we know we have the capital, the project and the people to support that, as you see. So, so that is kind of a more holistic view and, and also, so, so I won't repeat them, but all the lineup of, of requests from, for example, Washingtonville and very specific issues of, of the other neighborhoods so that it's kind of fair and square, that fairness that we've been talking about. We were, we implemented that policy. And it's not about talking or enacting policies, it's just getting them done. So, so that is, that is, I think the three things that would, that would, that I wanted to, to put on the table.
So, so that's a new look. That's a completely different look. What we have now is a capital budget where the department heads prioritized how they feel the purchases should happen. We also have a criteria scale that only I put, it's only my opinion, that criteria, criteria scale that we follow the, the controller's guidance is only my opinion of what criteria is more important. Is a trash truck more important than a fire truck? In my opinion, no. So, so those kinds of things are in our capital budget, but we never looked at what you just said. Certain sections of the community and what priorities that section of the community looks at. That's just another way of prioritizing. That's why we need guidance.
And that's why I'll finish again, just highlighting, you're flooding. If you, if you have another big rain, those, those drains are not going to do it. And, and we have the aquifer, question mark, have, have some money for that aquifer. Without those, just those elements, we, we can do beautiful land use or enact whatever we want to enact. But the, the, the information is going to be there for, for, for our planner, for that engineer you want to hire, that planner, the boards, the, 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 the projects, the, the actual developers, the community. We, we are, we, we need to invest in, in, in giving a current view of, of, of what is, what is, what is there. So I, I think that's my priority, number one.
Those directives come from you guys. Those directives comes, comes from, from.
But actually I'm not over imposing, y'all finish with this again, because it, it's really the priorities that come out all from, from, from the previous comprehensive plan and the period, and it all, they all, they all come up. This is the five priorities that are there for the village, for all of us. But it's, it's like the kind of the little constitution we have. And it binds us more than you and everybody. It's, it's simple, like flooding. What are we doing about this one? Every budget needs to hit hard on that one. And if our, you know, if you're covering, this is the time. We have federal money coming in, we have Friday coming. This is the time where we really nail it and have a budget that is going to be the most meaningful, I guess, of a decade.
Victor, I, I actually agree with that initiative. And I also think that it dovetails, you know, if you're a community that has the flooding issues that we have and you don't have an engineer working on it constantly. Yeah. You, you, you're behind the eight ball. So I, I, I yeah, you you you're behind the eight ball. So I I I I think that that dovetails into, you know, having staff who could work on projects like that and not have to hire. But I I do agree that that should definitely be a priority.
It it is a great discussion point, an excellent discussion point. I agree with with Victor a hundred percent.
Jerry, in terms of the capital budget, you know, last year we had three pages of items, uh some large and a lot of small uh things, and they were ranked multiple ways. I think the issue would be to have, i- if if when you present it, to have the first ten, the second ten, you know, et cetera, going down in terms of the ma- major priorities for a capital budget. Uh and spread and and continue to look at it over the five-year period. Otherwise, it gets it gets overwhelming to try and get to it. We're 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 not out of the minutia to the big picture. I think that's part of what Victor is talking about as well. I think that would be very helpful.
So, um now I agree with you. The thing is, there's nobody else to ask about reorganizing the priorities except the board members. So for instance, let me explain that. The department heads have provided their priority. They're not going to change their mind. I may have priorities, but I'm not the entity, I'm not the person that approves capital budgets, the capital budget. That'll be the Board of Trustees. If there's any way that you want us to look at the priorities of the of the capital budget, I think I think it's going to have to come from the Board of Trustees and what your priorities are so that we can initiate those priorities in number order as you provide them to us.
If that's what you want want us to do, which I'm happy to be to be part of, uh doing it with with the rest.
There's no one else to ask for priorities, like I, you know what I mean? We've already given our priorities. I've given my criteria scale. Other than the board, which I really, I want, I want the priorities to come from the people who are approving the expense, who are passing the resolutions, who are voting on the resolution, resolutions for all these items, so we can have those. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
If that, I don't have a problem with that, but then we can't have wait till the thirtieth. We have to have the stuff next week so that we can start to go through that and work, because it takes time. You you will, steps, you have been take, you know, been working on months on the budget. That's not what we're going to do. But for us to do it, we need to see what everybody else has in mind and have time to put that together in a meaningful manner, and you can't do that, you know, by getting it on the thirtieth and doing it on the thirtieth.
Right, so it won't take me, it won't take me and staff, it won't take staff and I more than one day to remove the items that have already been purchased out of the capital budget. Take a look at items that have expired or have been funded with other money. It won't take us more than one day, Dan. So we can have that to you early next week so that the capital budget is the boards to dice up, chop up, however you want to do it, and then we can have that discussion uh on the thirtieth. We can get that to you. That's no problem. Well, all of the work has been done in the capital budget, except the updating, and it won't take us a week to do the updating. It'll take us a day to do updating. So I'm comfortable, we're right there. I mean, we're we're, like I said in in the previous meeting, we're we're thinking about our our budget all year long. That's why when we set ourselves up this year to start looking at the budget, we knew exactly what uh what we were looking at and hoping and praying that the end of the pandemic was getting close. I still don't know if we're close, but mandates are being lifted and things seem to want to go back to normal, so. That's how we're, that's how we're trying to approach it. Mayor, I didn't think we had fif- sixty minutes worth of conversation, but I'm glad that we did.
I I have just one more comment, and it's about the Army Corps, and it's great that we can take it out because the federal government is taking care of our share, but we have, we still have to maintain it. So once the plan is executed, we have to be, we have to have in the budget a hefty annual fee for maintaining it.
Yeah.
And I think we need to not, we've never budgeted for that. We've never really considered that, and to that end, you know, we haven't done a good job of maintaining that reservoir. And that's why it's in such poor shape. You know, it was released to us and we didn't maintain it. So I, you know, I think that um we want to be sure we're putting away funds for this maintenance of the Army Corps plan once it's completed, because that's something that's completely on us.
Okay, that 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 is an operational recurring that's going to have to be in the budget when it's operational.
Right, but I mean.
Completed.
But I'm I'm my point is, you don't put it in now because it's not operational now.
No, but I think it's something, it's going to be a hefty chunk of a budget, and we don't, it's not going to be offset by any new kind of revenue. That's all.
Yeah, it's going to be several hundred thousand, but but I want to tell you wh- why, there's also some items in the budget that may not be the focus of uh of um of of what we've looked at in the past, and that's with our negotiated CSEA uh contract. When we hire a new motor equipment operator, that starting salary is twenty thousand dollars less than the person that's retiring. When we hire a new laborer, that starting salary is fourteen thousand dollars less. And when I say that, it's also savings that we can count on year after year after year as our as our long-term employees retire and we replace them with new employees, because there's no step guide anymore. They basically do not get their five, six thousand dollar chunk in increases as a step and the two percent or two and a half percent negotiated. They're just getting the two percent negotiated. And so that's saving us a tremendous amount of money in labor costs that I can demonstrate, and I'll do an analysis when I'm finished with the capital budget and when we're finished with the budget meetings. And I'll be able to demonstrate that because we have retirees, people who've worked here twenty-five, thirty years. They leave and we replace them, uh just like mechanics. Right, mechanics now are sixteen thousand dollars less starting salary for a mechanic, uh only because we were so successful at negotiating the contract. And those are those are long-term savings, Nora, that will help us add two hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand for the ongoing maintenance of the of the Army Corps project. Because I think our number is like three hundred and fifty thousand a year. Yeah, it's big. It's a lot. It's almost like so much, how are we going to spend all that money?
Good, okay.
Yeah, Lou, go ahead. Okay, then then we have to move on.
Okay, yeah, good. Two thi- two things. When we were talking about priorities and and Jerry can't set the priorities, we have to set them and then tell him what to do. We can't wait for him to tell us what he wants to do and then pick at. So uh if there aren't priorities, it's because his board hasn't set them. Uh and the other thing about maintenance of of this uh of this project, yeah, we're going to have to maintain it. We have to send police cars over there too. We have to do all sorts of stuff for that part of the community, and it hasn't been done for years, which is what I was talking about with the river maintenance fund. We haven't, we've been ignoring it. So, yeah, we're going to have to maintain that project when it's built. Absolutely.
Okay, uh thank you, Jerry and Steph and Board. Jerry, I'm looking forward to reading the whole thing.
Every mayor, everyone's contributed to this process, but no one has contributed more than Augie, Dan, and Laura Vasami. And Laura is my favorite.
We are well served.
Oh, Jerry, Jerry, she just got off the call. She missed that.
Okay, uh thank you all. I'm going to go to the regular Board of Trustees' work session. Need a motion to open the work session.
So moved.
So we already did.
Now that was the budget session. Well, now we'll open the work session. All in, it was second by Lou, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Uh I see we have, uh I saw Mr. Burt. Where Mr. Burt go?
He's there. I see him.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees.
Hi, buddy, how are you? Uh, you know, as is all want when there is a visitor uh who has a business before us uh this point. Uh Mr. Burt is the chairman of the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission. We're going to take that item. Oh, I need a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
Before we vote, do that, I'd like to vote for motion to adopt the agenda, but there are at least two things that were left out of the agenda that should that need to be in in the future. Uh one has to do with the enforcement of the multiple dwellings law, which we have not completed. The other with the community refrigerator, and they should be back in the where they are were, and that uh the uh uh view of the uh recommended change in the wetlands law uh be moved to number one, and with those changes, I so.
Okay, he made the motion. Second.
I second it.
Full rule. Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Mattes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The floor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
No.
Uh so let's go to Mr. Burt's item. Uh let me just find it on the agenda. Okay, proposed wetlands amendment from H C C M C. This is item one H, or as my grandma would say, H. Thomas, would you like to give us a a a roughened uh ready assessment of what this is?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The 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 big ticket item here is that it moves the it it makes the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission the permitting authority for uh wetlands permits. Uh there are a bunch of other small fixes in there. Uh it's uh clarifies the definition of wetlands in a few respects. Uh you can see in the red line, in the black lines and uh and does some other definitional stuff, but the and it aligns uh the notification practices with what's used for every other uh application. But the major thing that it does is changes the authority. Much of what comes in front of Harbor Coastal for consistency comes on uh wetlands applications, but they have to go through planning first, which means it's first touched by planning and then by us. Some of that seems to me unnecessary since much of what we're going to do is uh our review of floodplain and environmental issues that are already embodied in uh our uh policies for consistency. As we are currently and have long been the permitting authority for uh marine structures, we can be the permitting authority for wetlands, and that means that at least some group of applications are only going to need one board to touch them instead of two.
Do we know why planning was the permitting authority before? There there has to be some history here, right?
There probably is, and it's it has been that way for so long that I can't give you a history.
Uh first of all, um I want to thank the um Harbor and Coastal Zone Management Commission for a unbelievably thorough job of um going through nitty gritty, which it ain't easy. And for the last uh half years, the the board has been saying that, you know, it should be moved from the planning board to the uh uh to the Harbor and Coastal Zone Management Commission for the wetlands permit. The reason I think it was in the planning board originally was uh that is that the law itself was defined as, or I guess it was is targeted at under the D E C as a freshwater wetlands. And it's it's really not. It's all wetlands. In that, so um when most communities don't have a Harbor and Coastal Zone Management Commission separate from a planning board. And so at the time I think this was done, uh it just was handled that way. And um it has become, I think, a a detriment to try and, you know, just adds more more stops and and less productivity in terms of uh review and uh getting to coming to grips with it. It doesn't take away any of the planning board's authority for what their role is inside planning. But it does uh help to streamline the process, which is one of the major issues that we continually hear rumblings about uh from residents and applicants as well.
Yeah, I'm 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 not uh necessarily against it. I just want to play devil's advocate here. I'd like to know, one of the things I'd like to know is, are there other communities, because there's a lot of communities now that have a coastal zone management program, how do they handle it? Uh are are there CZMs permitting authorities for wetlands too?
If I may attempt to answer that, Tom, most communities like Ry, um Norah Shell and others don't have a separate board.
I I understand that. My question is, communities that have a separate board and how they handle it. It was very specific, uh and I would just, you know, and and I I would just like to see some research on that. Uh so if we're reinventing the wheel, I just want to make sure that it hasn't been tried to be invented before and to see what what happened in those other communities. I think that that's just basic due diligence, and it wouldn't be hard to figure out. We could have, we could have our attorneys work on that.
Yeah, let me share something. I had some work on that field to work on the protecting the Hudson for many years, and in that capacity, looking at all the local waterfront plants and which of the commissions, how they function, they are very different. They're actually uh probably one, only one along the Hudson may have some resemblance or so that independent that our ha- ours has, and ours is very different from the ones along the shoreline. So they're very unique and that they are independent and have their own consistency are very, very few. So so it's a, it's very hard to compare. It's very difficult research because there's no, it's not that it it's, you cannot compare, you have to compare based on the structure. But if you compare the ones that do have more more authority, uh they they are giving the, they are giving more permitting and and are stronger.
I that that that's all I'm asking for is just.
That's what I'm telling you. I only I only could find one that was kind of as strong as ours all along the Hudson. Maybe there's two or three, but very few. So it's a very unique conversation.
Okay, this is why we hire attorneys to do this research for us.
Can I, can I ask Victor where that is? What what community is that, Victor?
I think it's Sleepy Hollow, for example, is one.
Sleepy Hollow?
Sleepy Hollow is one. And there's been a lot of progress in L W R P commissions along the because precisely, the Department of State has been helping, so every every community has a stronger, especially riverfront ones. I don't know what it would give to to this conversation since it's very specific on very detail, much details of 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 the wetlands and how it functions within the permitting, and that's where really I have the questions, but but anyway, if the board wants to go that way, I I I don't think it adds at this point to to the conversation. It will slow down something that we've been waiting for like five years. I I I I just, so respectfully disagree. I don't think that will give us any any help, though.
Okay, uh I I I I don't see how, looking to see if all the communities have done this, it would be detrimental to the process, you know, it it's just part of the process. That's just due diligence. It's doing your homework. Uh I'm not saying that we should, I'm I'm still talking, I'm still talking.
Okay.
I'm not saying that we should not move forward with this, but while we're moving, it's okay to look.
Okay, so make a proposal, who's going to do it and when they're going to bring it back to us, because I don't really want to slow this process down.
You can, my suggestion is if you want to have the attorneys uh contact the Department of State and coastal management, they will be the ones to be able to tell you.
I think that that is a good.
Let me finish, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was I was agreeing with you. I know you're not used to that, but I was agreeing with.
Okay, uh on the so- on the south end of Long Island, most of the wetland areas are owned by the town, but under a different mechanism, and the trustees actually have a separate role than the tr- than the trustees for the village or the or the town. So you separate board, and they control uh with complete autonomy what you what you can and cannot do in the wetlands. And that's uh and that has to do with the underwater land ownership and how that came about.
Um, and that's uh, and that has to do with the underwater land ownership and how that came about. Uh, but.
It has to do with patents.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That has to do with the patents, right?
Yeah, you're talking about the letters patents and, and for, for instance, Donical pad covers uh, most of the Hamptons. It gets, it gets to be a much, a much tighter and a much different manage point than what I think has been done, but conceptually the same. I, you're having, you're, you're, what we have is a structures permit, um, you know, it's easy um, review in what we're testing as wetlands permit all in one. Um, many of them are, are more fractionalized uh, on the east end of Long Island due to the ownership issues. Uh, because that triggers a whole different um, issue. Uh, but what I'd like to suggest is uh, you know, uh, maybe the, um, you all can, you know, once the trains can move forward and a, a quick review on that and hopefully get back to us in, you know, a week or two. Uh, Department of State is a good resource and can tell you quickly, you know, if there are other communities and where they. Uh, and um, but I'd like to try and, um, you know, if the board is agreement, by sending it to the other land use boards for their comments. Uh, so, you know, uh, don't sidetrack this.
I, I'd like to discuss this at least at one more meeting before we send it to the land use boards for their comments, because that usually is when you, you've already decided that, that you, you're going to pass a law. And I, I'd like, you know, input, let me finish, I swear. I'd like input from the village attorneys on, you know, the draft of the law and uh, if they see any uh, hiccups or modifications that needed to be made and have this back on the agenda in two weeks and see where we are. It's a huge change.
Second, second.
It's a huge change.
The idea of moving this forward, uh, and at the same, go working on parallel tracks so that we can then get all the input at the same time, give them two weeks or, because it could even take even longer. And actually, why, why do we want this to go to zoning, uh, trustee Natchez? Why do we want this? Maybe I didn't understand. Why do they want it to go to zoning?
I don't care whether it goes to zoning or not. It's just been the practice that we've sent it to land use boards when we do, we're changing land use language. But, you know.
But it's nothing they implement.
Basically, what you need is the, the input from the planning board.
Right, why don't we refer to them at the same time that we make all the other research and then.
Because we don't know, we don't know if we're going to change.
Can I finish? Can I finish? They, they work more, uh, they, they meet more regularly so we can get their feedback and then put everything together. And then we don't piecemeal so much. So if we could refer that, I'll second your motion and move, move, let's move this forward. Let's try to get things up.
Okay, so let me get this straight. You want to send this to the land use boards tonight? If it's a major law, it's the first time we've looked at it before the village attorneys have done the research or pined on.
Well, the lawyers prepared this. Didn't, didn't the land use lawyers help the board prepare this? Actually, you didn't have, have the chance to do. Can I finish? Can I finish? Trustee, let me ask, we have here the chair of the commission. Actually, we're arguing, talking of arguing among ourselves where we have this great opportunity to have him spend this and ask him the questions. Have the lawyers, have the lawyers looked at this? Can I ask him a question? Have the lawyers, land use lawyers helped you prepare this? How is this coming to us? Really, the main question we haven't asked you, how, how did this come about?
Hold on. Victor, there's a point of information here that you're missing. The land use lawyer may have helped them forward, and that's fine. I have no problem with that. We are represented by the village attorney. We are the people who passed the law. Those land use attorneys are not representing us in this matter. We have a village attorney and we, we ask him to review the law. Now, I know you'd all like to write him out of the process, but he's an integral part of the process. This is the law of the village of Mariner. It's not the law, in all due respect, it's not the law of the, the zoning board, it's not the law of the planning board, it's not the law of H C C M. It's our law. So I want our attorney to review it.
I want that too. I second, I second that, Mayor. I second that. I hope, Bob, I'm sure Bob and Mark are going to give us great advice in two weeks. Happy and welcome that actually it's not just necessary, it's part of our system. But I wanted to ask, to ask, uh, the commissioner or the head of the commission to tell us how this got to us after years of the making. Is, I think that's the reason why we're here.
It, it is to, to review that law, to decide whether we want to move forward. And you're wanting to send it to the other land use boards without having our lawyer review it? Go ahead, but if, Thomas.
Well, just to try to be informative, actually, we, we worked on this for quite a while and uh, in the drafting stage, uh, we still shared uh, counsel with the Board of Trustees. So at that point, it was, uh, it was the, the folks from uh, Mr. Spalzino's office who were, uh, who were assisting us getting the draft together. So just telling you for information purposes.
But that's been well over a year ago, right?
It, it went, it, yes, that's correct. It, it went around for a while, so.
And who was that? Was that Christie?
Yes.
Probably Christie, yeah. Okay, so she's no longer here.
I, I understand. Some institutional memory may have been lost. I'm not trying to push anybody about who should or needs to review it. I was just providing information.
Thank you, Thomas. All I'm asking is to wait two weeks before you make a decision. You, you, you know, so many things have languished for, for years. Now this has to be done tonight.
Can I ask you a question, please? So I'm telling.
Please do.
Trustee Commissioner Burke, uh, this, this, you have land use council from a law firm. Uh, did they help you prepare this? Or is it just the commission working?
What, what I was telling you is when we had land use council that were from the same firm as uh, the Board of Trustees Council, we had their assistance drafting. Uh, and we've, we've now moved this through the process and we haven't had uh, much interaction with uh, our present land use council on this.
Thank you. That was the question. We're finally getting, so, so essentially, uh, why now you, do you want to fulfill that gap? Do you want to run it again through them or should we then, how, because I don't want them. How, how can we streamline this process? Really the main of the conversation, because are you going to refer to them or? And they are the same as the land and as the planning board. Shouldn't we have eventually more like a joint? I mean, has, has your land, land use council, your council checked it, says it's good to go, good to pass to the Board of Trustees or? I don't want to go back, back, you know, go back to the questions that, or issues that they're going to say, well, we, we think that was, that was probably not the right, the way we wanted you to proceed. I, I want to just kind of not, if we're going to move forward, know that, that the council that is, is now sitting next to you is, is okay with all this of, of, with all this of changes.
So, so that hasn't happened.
Now, let me, let him answer, please.
So wait, that, that, that's a question to me, like.
Yeah.
We're, we're fine with, our hands are off it. We, we had council in drafting, we voted it and it's our recommendation. I, I'm not worried that, that we don't have attorneys' opinions on it.
No, Thomas, I understand that. I understand that and I appreciate that. But I think the question was, has the current council reviewed it?
Uh, they, they reviewed it uh, briefly. They did not do a deep dive because that had already been done by Mr. Spalzino's office. And I, I understand there's been a change of personnel. That was a while ago.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So we have a situation where if you're making the argument that the current land use council was the one who did it, that didn't happen. Uh, this has been over a year since Mr. Spalzino's firm has looked at it with an attorney who's no longer there. This would be foolhardy to send out to the other boards and commissions until we've given them, our, our attorneys at least two weeks to look at it. I don't know what the, the, the problem was with two weeks. And to also look at the other issue about other communities and how they operate.
Um, can I say something?
Yeah, please do.
Okay, so having spent a lot of time with our L W R P rewrite, which isn't fully completed and adopted, that was before I was a trustee. Um, I am, L W R Ps are as varied as the communities in which they sit. So I don't think there's an awful lot of benefit in comparing um, th, this process to other communities. Um, and you know, if, if that's something we want to ask the attorney to do, I'm just, I'm not sure it's, it's a good use of their time. Um, I would suggest that, you know, we develop a policy that if we're going to discuss a law, we make it, you know, I mean, we ask the attorneys, we give them a heads up, like, we've had this, this was on the agenda. This is the third time it's been on the agenda. We should point out to them that this is going to be up. You know, it's, it's, we don't always get through our agenda and sometimes it feels like, you know, you've taken a test two or three, you're prepared for the test two or three times. The test get cans, gets canceled, but you still have to keep studying for it. So I think we should be better off at, you know, letting, just reminding our attorneys that this is something that we're going to discuss today. We're not great at that. And I also think, based on all of the laws we have passed and tried to pass, where we've involved land use boards, um, there's a benefit to sending it to the boards who may have comments earlier on. And so I think while we're, while Bob and Mark are looking at this draft, it's, there's nothing wrong with the planning board making comments as well. Because we're all going to keep going back and forth on this and let's just do a parallel track. This is, this is not a complicated law. This is something that's been discussed for many years. And I think we can proceed judiciously and efficiently by sending it to the planning board and by asking Bob and Mark to, to do a review. I mean, even if they reviewed it a year ago, how are they going to remember? You know, it's, it's a year ago. So I'm.
Okay. And Thomas could correct me if I'm wrong. He's the current chairman. I'm a past chairman. Wetlands permit is not dependent upon the policies of an L W R P. So it, that's kind of apples and oranges right there. So I think it is helpful to look at how other communities are doing. I, I don't understand why you wouldn't. Uh, it, it just seems to me to be, you know, this is a two-week wait on a law that's very important, changing permitting authority for an important function, and it may very well be the best thing to do. And I'm not saying it isn't. It's the first time we're discussing this. We, we, we've had laws that we discussed for a year and a half. Yes, Victor.
We, we have here a recommendation from a commission that they say it's final, they voted on it. So our, I think at this point, then we'll see where we act. But we are not going to now say, oh, we're going to draft that, the commission or, 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 or are you suggesting that we now say have our attorney review and then we take this and say, you know what, we just don't want to act on it. We're going to send it back to you guys? I think it's better just to forward, pass, pass it on to the, to the, to the board, uh, as Nora, as Nora, trustee Lucas was saying. And on a parallel track, we wait and see what our uh, attorney has to say and we, then we'll make a decision, right? But then, then we'll, we'll have, we, we have advanced, as you say, we've been dragging in so many laws, so many law, so a long time. I, I think we have a final advice and a recommendation. Let's pass it on and then have a full discussion. Do I second trustee Lucas's uh, uh, maybe call for a vote then?
No, you, you can do it. I mean, this, you, you have, you have three of you want to do it, but I'm just pointing out that it makes no sense. You know, it, it really doesn't, you know, the idea, and I, and I respect the uh, C Z M. And, you know, I, I was a member of C Z M, but you're saying, you know, they passed unanimously and that's great. It's a recommendation. We're in, we're in legislating board. They're not trying to legislate. They just gave us, you know, this was like, if we had passed the, the first tree law that came to us, we'd all be gone. You know, because, because that wasn't something that the community was going to support. So to say, oh, we got this from a board and, you know, we're just going to pass it on like, like, like we're a pass through. What legislators? All I'm asking is for time to do diligence. If you don't want to have the time to do due diligence, fine, send it on to the other boards. But, you know, let them know that it, it could very well change.
You know, I, I, I'm not, I, I, I think that we're having a conversation without really hearing each other.
No, I, I, I don't agree with you. I, I, I'm, I'm not against this. I'm asking for two weeks' time to, for people to do due diligence.
Can I finish? I think part of the diligence, the part of the due diligence that we need to do, and we don't do this as a rule, is get information from all the stakeholders in the beginning. The planning board is a stakeholder here. Our lawyers are going to keep us on the straight and arrow here. They can work simultaneously without being in competition. And so I think that if we ask the planning board for comments and we get comments from Bob and Mark and, you know, if Bob and Mark, if we, if, if, if enough people think it's productive for Bob and Mark to do some research with D O S to see if there's any other kinds of examples or any precedents, they're going to figure out pretty quickly, they're smart guys, whether or not their research is productive. And then in two weeks, or maybe four weeks, depending on how this all takes, we'll be able to have an informed conversation.
For two weeks from now.
And if we don't have all the information, we'll make it clear and we'll discuss it two weeks after that. But I think if Bob and Mark can get their stuff done in two weeks and the planning board can make comments in two weeks, which maybe they can't, we'll have it, we'll have more information.
That's what I thought I said, yeah.
Well, second that for a third time. Can we just vote on it?
Yeah, 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 yeah. You can do it. Yeah, fine, fine.
So unanimously just pass it on?
Okay.
So it's going to be referred to Commissioner Burke. You're going to move forward on this. Thank you for.
You know, you have to load the, the code. The code says uh, that may be referred to land use boards. I don't think it just says uh, planning board. So I don't want to get in a situation where if the code says, we may be referred to uh, land use boards and we're just sending it to one board.
Mayor, can you read the entire sentence? Can you read the entire sentence? Because I think at the beginning it says, if it's a change to two forty-two, can you read the entire section? I think it's, though, you have to refer to those three at the minimum, if it's, if it's a, a land use change. But we have lawyers here that can help us, Mark and Bob. What's the, what's the section? The full section?
I'll have to pull up the code. It's going to take me a few minutes to do this, so.
I think we're going to be here for a while.
Agreed. Do you have the section, Mayor? It'll help me grab the section.
I don't know the section. I just threw it off the top of my head.
Oh, okay.
You know, I, I read something somewhere and sometimes it sticks.
If, if I may, just pragmatically, the, some of the folks at uh, zoning have uh, been commish, past commissioners of Harbor Coastal and they're, they're fine people, volunteer land, land use uh, and, and sometimes land use professionals whose opinions I respect. I, as a practical matter, I have no issue with getting uh, their views of the proposed law.
I agree with you. I, I don't know why you wouldn't.
David, David sat with me uh, and uh, for a year and.
Okay, so instead, instead of having him look it up, why don't we just send it to zoning and planning? Sure.
With me?
Sure, I don't know. Fine. Okay, fine. Thomas, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustees, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate your, your attention to this.
Did you enjoy the trip?
I did. Thank you for asking. I'm now a bit jet lagged, but if you need any, uh, I, I got to show my kids Rome and, and Florence and, and I will tell you that some things you really have to see with your own eyes. If you ever have the opportunity, I would say David is one of those things that you can't fully appreciate from photographs.
I, 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 I was uh, living vicariously.
Jealous, jealous.
Have a great time.
Thanks, thanks very much, folks.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Moving right along. Uh, item one A, American Rescue Flynn's. I'm sorry, what? Go ahead.
Mr. Sonoff and I were very engrossed and, and involved in the budget, but we didn't have time to uh, put a detailed plan together as the board has asked, so I don't have anything for A.
I, I don't have a problem with waiting on Jerry, but my concern is that I think we've all agreed that river gauges are to be part of this.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
And that's.
I agree with that.
In the, in the operating budget, we need the uh, ten thousand dollars a year for three years.
Okay, I'll get, I'll get that in there.
Building vacancy upon expired terms. Hold on. What's she doing? I'm sorry, I got a little screwed up. Is there an update for the village attorney to provide us?
Well, I, we have provided you with the laws. And we have provided you with a privilege and confidential memorandum with regard to what we see as the legal issue. I'll be happy to discuss it here if that's what the board wants, board wants to waive the privilege. If not, I will be happy to discuss it in, in an advice of council session, if you would prefer.
I, I'm fine with discussing it out here. You folks fine with discussing it out here?
Yeah, it's because it's base, yes, it's the basically the same issue as the cannabis moratorium, the confusion.
Yeah, here's, here's the.
Before you get started, Nora and I have said we're okay with waiving the privilege.
You're right.
Are the rest of you okay with waiving the privilege? Yes. Alright, so we, we've got a majority.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So here's the, the, the problem. And, and I should say, I may not have said this directly in the memorandum, but if you want to establish, do, there has to be a referendum. If you want to have that referendum at a special election, there is no problem, you can adopt this whenever you want. And they don't have to be a special election, I think it's within forty-five days. The problem comes if you want to have the referendum at the general election in November. The problem there is that there are two conflicting laws. Okay? There's one law that says, if you want a proposal on the ballot in November, you have to have it to the Board of Elections by roughly August first. The law dealing with referendum, with, with these kinds of changes, when this law rule law says that if you adopt the law before August first, you have to have a special election. So if you, there's no way to reconcile those two laws. If you read those two laws strictly, there's no way to put a referendum on the November ballot.
And, and so I, and I think this was, this was a confusion that a lot of communities had with the permissive referendum related to opting out. And it's, I think part of it is, we, we don't have village elections. So village elections were typically in March, so all of this language kind of relates to when the election occurs. But we, you know, twenty some odd years ago, we moved our elections to November. But the state law has never caught up with that. So it would, and also now that we're no longer involved with the, now that the primary has been moved up to June and early voting is occurring, the Board of Elections needs all the information for referendums earlier so they can get the military ballots out. So like there, there've been other changes of, of deadlines to get something like, it used to be you had to have something to, to them like in September before a November, a November election. Now we have to do it in August. So it seems like state law hasn't caught up with the change in, with the, with the changes that Boards of Elections have come up with in response to getting, to organizing early voting.
So that's correct. The, the, these laws are mandatory permissive referendums.
That's right. No, they're mandatory referendums.
Not permitted.
Mandatory permissive referend, mandatory referendum. They are not, they don't become law until they are passed by the voters.
So this, this looks like a problem that we should ask the state legislature to fix.
Well.
If we, if we voted theoretically on July thirty-first or thirty-third, whatever it is, can we designate the special election being November, whatever?
No.
There's a forty-five day
Right.
timeframe. I guess the other question is, I mean, it, it just seems like where, it, it doesn't seem appropriate that there's this bind. And the bind really was discovered because of all of the potential referendums for the opt-out law. Because that timing didn't work. Okay, we didn't realize this a year ago and we adopted two laws that just never got to the referendum and it never got to the Board of Elections.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't we have run into the same problem if they had?
I mean, nobody, nobody recognized it.
No, I'm just saying, no. Alright, well, there, there's, there's a conundrum. Well, it's it's March, it's now the beginning of March for all intensive purposes after tonight. Why don't we go to the Attorney General for an inter? Bob, is this something the Attorney General would apply upon?
I, I don't know.
She must love us by now.
I, I'm doubting it's landed on her desk.
I can, I can write a letter, we can write a letter to the Attorney General saying, how does one get?
Yeah.
Can you answer the question of how one gets a referendum on the November ballot, given these conflicting provisions?
I, I think we should write that and CC are two, uh,
I'm with you, yes.
And gosh, Jonathan, put the governor on there too.
Okay.
Well, we're not the only community that's had that problem.
I, I know. And, but if you don't, obviously, I'm, I'm not in favor of any of this, but I think that the logistical problem of figuring out how to do referendums should be fixed.
Yeah.
Alright, so Bob, can you get that? Mark, Mark Ken, Mark Ken. Hi, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
I love that.
Uh, I just want to put, we, we have on tonight, uh, Mr. Mr. Shafir, am I my parents correctly? Uh, Mr. Shafir is here for Vennicity, which is on for the regular meeting. Uh, so I'm going to skip ahead to two E so that we're not wasting, uh, Mr. Shafir's time and our time. So Vennicity, uh, two E. Thank you for coming here, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Board of Trustees, and everyone else in attendance. It's, uh, lovely to have the opportunity to speak with you all and share what it is that we do for communities and see if this is something for you. Just to share, you guys can all hear me, just okay?
Yep.
I, I just have to pop up for a second, but I'll be right back.
Should we?
What time is it in Israel?
It's, uh, it's tomorrow. It's, it's about twelve forty AM.
Thank you.
It's okay, but my initial thoughts was this was starting at three AM, so, uh, this is, uh, this is prime coffee. Uh, excellent. So should we wait for the mayor to return?
Yeah, I think he's interested in hearing this.
Wonderful. Excellent.
Boggy, can Jonathan share his screen?
Yeah.
Is that something you plan on doing, Jonathan?
Yes. Can you guys see my screen?
Yeah, yeah, so put the presentation.
Excellent. Just whilst I wait for the mayor to return, I'm not too sure if I've been to Mamarick, but I've certainly been to Westchester many years ago, so, uh, you have fond memories of the, of the area. I'm originally from Australia, so hence why the accent doesn't sound very Israeli. But, uh, very nice to meet all of you today.
Same here.
Let's head and roll.
Uh, so I'm just waiting for the mayor to.
I don't know if that has to go up. Oh, you're right.
And then later on, you'll have to rejoin it with your, with your video.
Jonathan, the mayor, he's returned.
Oh, perfect, it's, uh, my eyesight is.
Andre, if you could mute yourself, we have a presentation, then we'll.
Excellent. Uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to present. Uh, my name's Jonathan Shafir. I oversee, uh, village and city partnerships here at Zen City. Uh, just to share a little bit about Zen City, uh, we are a local government exclusive technology vendor. And our main mission is to help village leadership better connect, better engage, better understand their quiet majority residents. So the voices, the residents, I don't always have the right opportunity or the right means to share what's going on and what they care about within the village. And we do this to counterbalance, uh, what we refer to as the same ten people, the same few voices that we hear from, uh, very frequently. And we call them the STPs, same ten people. And we love them because they're passionate members of our community. But our, uh, primary goal is to help you guys hear from the remaining twenty thousand other residents on things that are important to the village, whether it be from flooding measures or anything or any of the matters we've, uh, had to spend in the last hour or so. Anywhere to down to downtown redevelopment projects, to what should our new park look like? Should we introduce pickleball courts, splash pads? And really understanding resident opinion and resident sentiments from all pockets of our community. That's our primary mission. Uh, and I'll just go through in just a few slices to how we actually achieve this. But, uh, as an Australian, uh, feel free to ask questions as we go along. Um, I'm very polite, so I always like to keep council sessions as conversational as possible. Excellent. Uh, as mentioned, we are a local government exclusive vendor, so we only work with cities, towns, villages, counties and a few different state agencies and district partnerships. Uh, we work with, uh, facilities as large as Los Angeles and Chicago. But like our bread and butter is actually working with towns and villages between about ten to fifty thousand residents. This is where we work directly with Board of Trustees, Board of Council Members, City Manager, Mayors. And this is where we actually see, uh, most impactful change because we're working very closely with senior leadership. Just to share, we work with about three hundred municipal governments, uh, within the area of similar sized communities. Towns like Guilford, where Springfield, Milton, Mer- Meriden, uh, Windsor, Long Meadow, which is even considerably smaller than you guys. I would focus that our main pillars uh, would harp on this. Tap into our quiet majority residents. Address any misinformation, misunderstanding within the community. But most importantly, improving our messaging and improving our storytelling to our residents so that they feel as informed um, about things that are going on. And of course, engage senior leadership board members as well. From a, uh, from a mission standpoint, how do we actually check this? How do we actually help you connect and better engage with your quiet majority residents? We look to do this in two ways. One is, or in two sides of the coin, it's part of our, uh, as part of our platform. First way is to look at organic chatter that our residents are already having about town-related manners, village-related matters, sorry, that's publicly available. So we'd connect to all town, uh, village-related channels, local and social media that's publicly available. Synthesize, aggregate and break down this resident feedback for you. Break it down into all the topics and departments that make up village hall. Anything from public health, public safety, sanitation, extreme weather, animal care, uh, parks and wrecks, you name it. And on top of that, we would then do a lot of sentiment analysis to give you a fundamental view as to how residents are feeling about things that are going on. And then, uh, because we are local government exclusive, I know that sounds like a weird thing to say, but a lot of our staff members, particularly from a reporting perspective, do come from a public policy background. And so we do look to do a lot of reporting for you that's designed to be written in ways that senior leadership, whether it be uh, Dan O'Gerry, anyone, uh, in the mayor's office or Board of Trustees would like to understand resident impact accordingly. Um, common topics that we look to do is, yeah, as anything from village events to flooding event measures, which I understand is a pretty important topic for you guys, but particularly connecting with diverse communities. So we do translate from multiple languages as well. So, and, and the goal of that is to really help you hear from all pockets of the community and not necessarily just that, uh, primarily English-speaking community as well. Um, as mentioned, uh, this is all accessible in live dashboards, live feed what's going on. And then on top of that, we do look to do a lot of reporting. So our analyst team will periodically, every couple of weeks, once a month, quite often tied to a Board of Trustees meeting right now, will prepare an insight report for you on an issue that you're really passionate about. And our, and our data analyst team will comb through the topics, the projects, go into it in a more fundamental core level and write up a report for you so you can see what the key issues are. Um, of course, this is not a one-for-one example, but this is just another small town that we work with in the Northeast where they faced a recent flooding um, incident. And we helped synthesize for the senior leadership what the main priorities were in the event of a recent flood. Was it utilities? Was it getting food supplies out there? Was it evacuation measures? A highway closure was actually a big thing. So helping, helping senior leadership uh, understand what the resident priorities were, all in real time. This is a bit more standardized local, so like when we're thinking of introducing bike lanes or re, park redevelopment, you know, more day-to-day things that our local government seems to do, helping understand resident opinion and sentiment accordingly. And, uh, of course.
When you say you synthesize, can I ask a question? When you say you synthesize information?
Um, yes.
My question is, if you have four people who are, who comment in whatever, whatever it is, or ten people, and six of them are in one, saying one, you know, the four, and four of them saying against it. Or, or, or only, the only comments are from four people. From what I'm seeing, you don't, you don't, I, I don't quite understand how that, how that gets communicated and, and how you, in, in what you're, what you're actually doing. That's what I'm not sure.
Excellent question, and my apologies if I didn't explain that thoroughly. Um, so yes, correct, if there's an issue, um, and it's being discussed on a local news website or on social media, so Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, uh, et cetera, et cetera. And there are comments, and we understand, let's just say there's a hundred comments. Hypothetically, uh, we will do sentiment analysis on each comment, et cetera, et cetera. Whether it's a comment, whether it's a like, whether it's a retweet, whether it's commenting on a comment. So if there's a hundred overall, and we deduce that there's thirty positive, twenty negative and fifty neutral, we will showcase this for you. But on this particular issue, thirty percent are showing support, admiration, encouragement towards the initiative that's going on in the city. Twenties are saying, eh, they're not so in favor, and here is the feedback, and here's the commentary, and here's the constructive criticism as well. And here's fifty more people, fifty more voices that are just asking more questions. What does this mean? How will this play out? Who will fund this, et cetera, et cetera. So there will be neutral comments as well. I'm not too sure if that answers your question, Mr. Nutchers.
It does, but that, it, it, you know, when you have a lot of people commenting, I understand the value. When you have very few people commenting, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how that plays. That's what I'm, that, trying to get to.
You're leading me in perfectly. That's a perfect segue into the next part of the conversation. Uh, so there are, there are particularly for a community of around about twenty thousand residents, there are probably, um, topics or programs or events that you're personally passionate about, personally overseeing, that you would love it if residents were talking about this more. Um, and they're just not, it's just not the case, uh, whether it's something that, that's only been discussed at trustee levels, so the red, uh, residents don't know about it just yet, or it's just not a very. Or it's just not a very popular topic in of its such. And so what we do on top of just the organic chatter is we do a lot of proactive outreach for communities. And this can be in the form of polls or short surveys. We call them community asks, where we ask on a particular topic, stormwater drainage fee, what do you guys, what residents, what do you know about it? What are you most encouraging about it? What's the big thing that you want to see change moving forward about this stormwater drainage fee? And so our survey research team will comprise a short poll or a short survey for you to start the conversation with our residents. Or for lack of a better analogy, I love to think of it as throwing a pebble in the pond and watching the ripple effect. And on top of that, we, we do have a proactive outreach, like a civil engagement space where we can, in 27 different languages, publicize things that are going on within our community and actively encourage two-way resident communication to A, educate the public what's going on, but also to put out surveys, put out polls on certain initiative that's, that's taking place. Classic example, if I can share, is what it is that we do for communities. I know that APA was kind of briefly mentioned earlier in this, in this board of trustees session where we actually help communities understand, oh, we've got $3 million to spend for APA. That's going to be impacted, that's going to be filtered through the community in terms of programs. What are the main priorities that you look to see go into that, into that 3 million? What, and then you actually can, in a weird way, almost tabulate how much you're thinking of spending so that you can actually get residents to prioritize and rank and plug and play to things that make sense for them. So it's a combination of educating the public, but also comprising active resident feedback on this, on this topic. I'm not too sure. That was a very long-winded answer to a very specific question, but I'm not too sure, trustee member, if that helped clarify if I, or if I just raised further questions, if that makes sense.
I sort of understand.
Yeah. I will, I will emphasize that like, as part of our partnership, we onboard all the relevant people that we need to within senior leadership of the community. And every two weeks, every three weeks, we arrange a catch-up hypothetically, if it's with Daniel or Jerry. And then we showcase things that we're seeing in the resident feedback. We also showcase best practices that we're seeing in other communities who are undergoing similar challenges or are thinking of developing similar initiatives so that you, as the village, don't need to reinvent the wheel. This is from a cannabis moratorium example. This is what this particular community face. This is how they approach it. Let us know what you think. Take, take best practices or et cetera, et cetera. And that's the, that's the beauty of working exclusively with local government is that we see things quite frequently and are always happy to connect and share best practices as we, as we, as we, as we come across similar things within your community.
I, I have a question. Can I, and I don't know. But, um, so this is basically social media. So you're, it's not really the rest of the population. It's the rest of the population that uses social media.
Not quite. Almost, as in like we do leverage social media, but we also tap into 311s or local news websites, community message boards. And particularly from this proactive outreach, we can use SMS or QR technology so that, you know, residents who don't use mobile or desktop, et cetera, et cetera, can actively participate in polls and purely from like a.
How would that, how would that work if you don't use? I mean, if you don't use social media, how would you, how would you know to participate in a poll?
We can advertise it on your website, in your weekly newsletter, et cetera, et cetera. Or, you know, flag it on a meeting just like this, et cetera, et cetera. Where to actively participate in polls or community outreach. And purely from an accessibility perspective, I'm not too sure how many languages are spoken in, in the village, but our pages can be translated into up to 27 languages based on the user's preferences as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. No, it's a very, it's a very valid point though. So I, it's, my apologies if I didn't explain that earlier on in the, in the conversation.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Or is there more presentation?
I'm very passionate about what we do at Zen City, so I could take up till 12 AM your time. But I can only imagine you have more other resolution items to discuss.
So with the communities that you identified that are similar to, in population to America.
Great.
Have been the big issues or drawbacks that have happened.
In terms of like what, what their biggest challenges are from using the technology?
What the biggest challenges are, how do you, you know, I, I think Nora's question was, you know, if they don't do social media, you don't, you know, how do you contact them?
Yeah. So that's what.
So if you don't have their email.
Ask and answer.
And you don't, and you don't have social media, you know, poll that you create, it for a stimulus is fine to an audience that is there. But, so the question is, how have you overcome that in other communities or has it not been an issue?
That's an excellent question. And so the page we're looking at right now is something super duper excellent to news. So from the, what we call civil space, it's a relatively new initiative within Zen City. We recently purchased a company called Civil Space that does proactive outreach to really counterbalance these concerns that you mentioned, which are totally valid. And so even if you don't have email, even if you don't have use social media, which a lot of people don't. The, the goal of the proactive outreach is that, you know, all, all you'll need is a QR code. You hover over it and a photo and pops up and it takes you to a website, et cetera, et cetera. So this is accessible on any desktop. You can, a lot of, a lot of cities actually link it to their city website as well. So residents who are just perusing your, sorry, village website can easily see some of the active things that's going on within the community. Idea boards, engage other residents and participate in surveys, et cetera. So you don't, you don't have to have social media to participate. If that's the short answer to the long, it's the short answer.
Yeah, I, I know that some members of the board don't participate in social media and some do it very rarely. But I can, I can tell you, I, I do it a lot and just basically Facebook and a little bit of Twitter. And there are so many other online social media applications that young people are now into. That it's really, it really is hard to keep up. And for me, you know, I find that it's, you know, it's a public opinion bath every day. People give you constant feedback, positive and negative, and you can, you can assess it based upon, you know, who's giving you the feedback. But you could, you can, you know, get a tenor of what's going on. So I mean, I, I understand the usefulness of this. Because it really is, you know, it, it's, it's the back fence of society now, you know, that, that's where, you know, information gets passed, that's where opinions get formed. That's where concerns get voiced, sometimes valid, sometimes, you know, overwrought. But, you know, it, it, I don't know how you find out what's going on in a community if you don't really know what, what's going on over social media. So I, I, I really do understand the utility of this.
For gauging what's going on on social media. I'm not sure it's.
What's going on in the community.
Well, but.
When people have a concern in the, let me finish, Nora. When people have a concern in the community.
Tom, let Nora, let Nora finish.
No, she would, she was, no, Dan, because she didn't understand what I said. When, when, when people have a concern in the community, Nora, they go to Facebook or they go to Twitter to voice it. That's what I was saying.
Tom, and Tom, what I'm saying is, when some people have a concern in the community, that's where they go. That's not everyone.
I know it's everyone.
You said when people. So all I'm saying, I understand what you're saying. But I think social media captures some of the residents. It doesn't capture all of the residents. And, and it can, and, and, and that isn't just in Mamaroneck. So there are some people who spend a lot of time on social media. And there are some people who spend a lot of time differently. This will get, this will definitely get information from people who spend time on social media. But I don't know that it's going to capture everybody in the village. And that's, I mean, that's really, I think we have to be straightforward and honest about how it gets evaluated. It gives us more information about some of the population, especially the populations who are active on social media. It doesn't give information to people who choose not to use it. And that's, or who don't use it on a regular basis. That's all I'm saying.
Lou would have said, yeah, yeah. Nora, my experience with social media has been that you need to cultivate the, the audience. I started out very early with Twitter and got it up to about 15,000 or so before I stopped engaging with it every day. And it's something you can create, you can create a, a, a community. That's what will enable us to do, create a community that engages around a, a, a common goals. So yes, to begin with, it would be just like another, another social media, but you have to be skillful at working it and communicating and creating that two-way communication because 90% of it is people just want to be heard. And if you, and it's a way to listen to them. And it's an excellent way to, to kind of pull, not, not scientifically, but, but to take the temperature of things. If you, you know, I used to see what the reaction was to a story or listen to what people were chattering about or go back and forth with folks. And it was very helpful in, 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 in doing that old job. And I think it would be helpful with us in governing this village as well.
Lou, I understand how social media works. I really do. But my point is, this product collects information about existing, from existing social media accounts about the village. There are people in the village who do not participate in social media. I don't think this is going to get them to participate more. So what all, so, so all I'm suggesting is, we're going to get information about a portion of the population, but we're not getting information about the entire rest of the village. So you have the 10 people who regularly come to board meetings. You have the other people who don't regularly come to board meetings, who may watch. We don't know. It's on LMCTV. And then we will be getting information from that portion of our population who, who, who may or may not live in the village, who are active on social media. Because you don't know always where, you know, whether they live in Larchmont or Rye or Harrison or, 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 you know, a next door can be anywhere. So I'm just saying.
Oh, pardon, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I was curious as to whether or not this is geo-fenced. Is that what, could you geo-fence it? Was it the gentleman who presented?
Mr. Shaffir?
Yeah.
Thank, thank you for the question and I'll, I'll, I'll bring the two points together. Yes, we do use GFS. We do look at only localized sources to the village. So we're only looking at localized discourse within your community. We do geo-fence, so using a GIS layer of your community to really localize resident feedback. That's the first part of the question. Did that make sense before I go to the second part?
Yes, it does. That's perfect.
I, I'd love to emphasize, it's, yes, social media is inclusive as part of this, but it's not just social media. So from the organic perspective, we look at news websites, community message boards, city-owned channels as well. So that would be your 311. Anything that's publicly connected, that we can connect, we can connect. And then on the outreach perspective, you basically don't even require social media. You just, you can use a SMS message, proact, come to a website, come to your page, et cetera, et cetera, and actively participate in surveys with or without social media. So I really did want to emphasize that, but I can clearly understand where that, this confusion might lie, but.
One more question. May I, yeah, go ahead. Another question I have is, is, does this require man-hours to operate? It seems like a lovely tool, but, but, but somebody's got to use the tool. I mean, I, I mean, how, how does it work?
So just to share what our basic partnership structure looks like, if we go live within about 10 days of thumbs up. In that period, the Zen City data analyst team does all the heavy lifting. We basically do the setup for you, find all the relevant channels, find all the relevant sources to connect, start to build these idea boards for you, and already start to do the basic reporting. Once we're good to go on day 10, we arrange an onboarding session with whoever takes the steering wheel on, on this team. And we basically just show you resident feedback straight away. And then every few weeks, however way that you want us, best practice for your relationship is, is we have a catch-up every two to three weeks, month, 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 just to share feedback that we're seeing in your dashboard. Share the insight reports that we've prepared for you on topics that you guys choose. So there's really very little people hours on your side to actually get significant value out of this. Of course, we'd love to be embedded in Dan or Jerry's workflow where my best practice is around about, let's just say you get to work at eight o'clock every day. 7:45, you might receive an SMS, a message or an email from Zen City which would summarize the key issues that have taken place or the key excitement factors from our residents overnight and what the big talk, what the big ticket items, what the big topics are that took place. That's how I, my best practice is in terms of.
And I don't want to drag this out, but you've mentioned whoever takes the steering wheel, how much driving is required? That's.
Very, 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 very little. I mean, like the, I presume it's Dan or Jerry. Yeah, it's.
So John, if I received that email, like I do many other emails, I would read it and then I would forward it to the board of trustees. So they're aware of what's, what, what those topics are. That, that typically initiates an email back if they're interested to say, hey, let's take a look at this at the next meeting or things of that nature.
Spot on. So even share like what this looked like. And I'm just trying to think of flooding or stormwater issue where we actually uncovered a lot of work for. This is a city, again, Texas, pretty similar size too in terms of population. Where we did a basic poll for them or basic insight request. And that started a conversation exactly how Jerry just initiated. And the council said, oh, we'd love to go a little bit further. And we actually did a basic poll where a community of about 28,000 residents, we did a quick survey and heard from, you know, 550 residents on an issue, asked a few demographic questions that how they felt about the upcoming stormwater drainage fee, what they knew about it, got some live feedback as well. And then we contrast and going back to trust, trustee Lucas's point, we actually compared and contrasted this as to what we were seeing on that organic dashboard on local and social media as well. And see it up as well. So we don't really, my best practice is to like, look at it as an ongoing conversation on a specific topic to provide consistent resident feedback.
But in your poll, in your example that you just gave, you're going back basically to most of the same people. Because those are the people who you can contact, not the people who are able, that are not on the boards or on social media. I, I think that's the question or the point Nora was saying. Not suggesting that the information isn't, you know, helpful. But I, I think the question is, you know, what percentage of the population is actually, you know, responding? And that, that's one of the issues. But I do have another question, if I may.
Sure.
I, I don't, I don't know what geo-fence means. So can you explain that to the novice?
Sorry, that's a good point. I've been in, I've been in this role too long. So we look at a map of your village and we basically just isolate conversations within the walls of your city, if that makes, of your village, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but if you're on social, if you're on social media, it's, I, I don't quite understand how geo-fence. If I, if I'm on my phone and I'm on social media, okay? And I'm in my car and I'm in Harrison, Rye, or whatever, another community, I'm still on social media.
So using that specific example, if I may, one of the things that we'd like to do is like, if we have a GIS layer of your, of your village, we can identify what the, like, let's just say there's an east-south, east-west, south-north as an example. We'd be able to identify what the key areas per different parts of your community are based on what people are saying about where, based on the language that they use in their comments and based where they might be posting from as well. So we can say, ah, in the north part of Mamaroneck, they really care about public safety. There's something that's taking place. In the south, it's an animal care related matter. Maybe a dog escaped home, something. And maybe in the east, it's a pothole and they're talking about accessibility on the. And maybe in the east, it's their, uh, a pothole and they're talking about accessibility on the sidewalk, et cetera, et cetera. So we can now actually isolate what some of those main issues are based on the different districts of, of your, of your community as well.
Okay, you know, I just, I just, I want to get back to, uh, utility.
Sure.
You know, I would say, uh, it, an empirical observation, you know, under, people under fifty are almost all on social media, uh, in some form or another. But what I have found, and I'm, and I'm well north of that, but what I have found, uh, is social media, even though everybody's not on it, a lot of times it'll drive the discussion about an issue. And you'll hear people who aren't on social media talking about the topic because friends, neighbors, uh, family members have spurred the discussion. Because they, they, they saw about it on social media. So there's a multiplying impact. Now, I, I know this because, you know, someone who's close to me is not on social media. And, uh, I, I, I know that, you know, that I've had discussions, uh, with that person and they have told me, you know, well, so-and-so told me she saw it on Facebook or she saw it. Although they're not on Facebook. But I'm just saying that it's ubiquitous. And just because a person isn't active on social media doesn't mean they aren't affected by social media, because social media affects the whole social atmosphere anymore. You can't get away from it. Uh, it, it, it's, you know, insidious in some ways, pernicious in some ways, but it's here to stay. So I, I just, I, I think, listen, the question here obviously is, this is on the work session. And the reason it's on the work session is because do we want to pursue it in the regular, you know, at, at, at the board meeting and past? So, you know, I, let's get to the point where, you know, do you want to move this forward? Or do you want to hold it off? Or do you want to not do it? Because we can't talk about it all night. Trusty Nash.
All right. Jonathan, can you tell me, uh, how long you've been in business?
Great question. Uh, we started out in twenty sixteen. Our first customer is the, was, uh, our first US-based customer was, uh, the city of West Sacramento, California in twenty seventeen.
Okay. And have you ever had a community drop you after they've started with you?
Of course, not everyone is a, no, not everyone can stay forever. So, uh, just like we change houses sometimes or, or change cars. Uh, so it certainly does occur, but we have an extremely high retention rate, which is a lot of fun. Um, but I, I do want to emphasize that, like, we are local government exclusive, so that like our whole analysis, our whole mission to drive value is totally thinking about the mindset of what's going on in local poli- in local government. And to actually share feedback, share examples, share benchmarks uh, of what's going on within your community and other communities that we're working with, so that you are generating as much value as possible.
I, I'm not trying to emphasize ne- negative, do not misunderstand me. Uh, I, I understand certain things that are of value here. For those that have dropped, go to another. Uh, I assume you did, you would do follow-ups to try and find out why.
Yeah.
What, can you give us?
No, it's, it's a great question. Uh, I'd say that the continue is budget. It's just something where COVID has struck and they've had to cut services sometimes. Unfortunately, we've been on the chopping block before. Um, it's a sad reality. Uh, we'd like to think that that's, but that's probably the major reason why someone has churned previously.
Yeah, kind of like you guys.
All right. Th- thank you, sir.
I have one more question. So, um, thanks. So do you have other New York State clients?
Uh, that's a great question. We just started in New York. Uh, the community, the community, the team that we work with in New York is actually the trend, the Mayor Adams Transition Office, N Y C speaks. Um, but we're very, very new to New York. So, uh, we work with cities in Connecticut, Massachusetts, New Jersey, et cetera.
So my question's very New York specific and, um, and it has to do with, um, public records. And I see that this creates a bunch of, a bunch more public records. And our village clerk and deputy clerk are here, and those are records we have to maintain. So how is that, you know, I, I can see the foil request coming. So how, how, how easy is it to retrieve this information? Because we are creating a public record with, with what we collect and it's.
Sure. Ev- everything we, uh, and this is a great question. Everything that we collect is publicly available already. So we're basically taking things that are publicly available, aggregating, anonymizing it so that there's no P I I, et cetera, et cetera. And we're just breaking it down into all the different topics and departments that make up village hall. So that we can better synthesize and comprehend resident feedback as that's already publicly available. And then we look to report on that accordingly. Um, so that, I don't know if that answers the question or if that answered a different question.
I guess my quit and Bob, Bob lit up. Um, is that going to be stuff that we're going to have to provide under foil when these reports come in?
Well, I, I think Nora, that probably depends on if this is a forum that the village creates and owns the information on. Then the answer is yes. Uh, is that how this is structured?
Uh, could you please repeat? I'm not too sure.
Is this a forum that the village creates?
Does the village pay, village pays you a fee? I assume you don't do this for free.
Correct. It's not for free. Uh, yes. So there's a fee associated with the partnership, correct?
So the village is, at least is creating this forum based on your software.
When you say forum, can you explain that, um, just so I understand?
This place for making comments and aggregating.
But Bob, Bob, what they're doing is gleaning comments and trends from social media, existing social media.
But they're doing it on behalf of the village.
Right.
Probably village records.
Yeah, so I.
All right. So it's a record.
Yeah. So probably, have you come across this?
Yeah. But for, I had for your request before, it's, yeah, I mean, the, the, the short answer is, is everything's already publicly available and everything's completely, uh, you can't like see anyone's person, uh, any individual's names, even if someone's commenting as an example, say, hi, I live at one, two, three Smith Street, and I really don't like X, Y, or Z. Uh, you won't be able to see that within the Zen City platform, et cetera, et cetera.
So, but you're, you're grabbing somebody. I, I don't know whether we need to get into debate on this or discussion of this. That ties me. I think there are issues is, is the simple answer.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, like it's come up, but we've had, uh, cities that we work, particularly in California, had, uh, for your request before and it's, uh, I don't mean to say that's not an issue, because it's, but it's, the, the short answer is, it's always like, here, here it is. It's already public, available information.
Mr. Shafir, you, you've answered very thoroughly and you've been very patient. Uh, but it, it's getting on and I, I have to ask my fellow, uh, elected officials. Do you want this on for the regular meeting?
Tonight.
Tonight, because it's on the agenda for a regular meeting. What we're doing here is deciding whether to deal with it at the regular meeting.
Well, I, from the fact that typically we don't put things on the work session and then do them the same night, that's, that's, we're doing that more and more, but that's not in our sort of rules and policy. I'm interested, I'm not interested in saying no. I'm not ready to vote on it tonight. I really want to learn more about it. I'm, I'm, I think, you know, I think there are tremendous benefits to it. I want to make sure the logistics really work and that
Okay.
Um, we're going to capture the, we're going to capture information that isn't just one portion of the population. So I'm, I think, you know, it's a big decision and I don't think it's a decision we make in one day.
All right, trustee, uh, to matches.
Um, I'd like more information. I'd like, uh, the attorneys to try and figure out the foil issue, because I can see that as a huge, a huge potential issue. Um, I'd like to have, you know, if we want to pursue this, I'd like to have staff talk to some of the, uh, other communities, uh, that are similar in size, uh, uh, in Connecticut and find out the pros and cons from their view.
Yeah, uh, trustee Nash, as I did speak with, uh, the chief elected officials from Guilford, Connecticut and from West Springfield, Massachusetts. Uh, the, uh, the mayor of, uh, West Springfield is a heavy user of the system there. He, uh, particularly commented about the, uh, the polling feature, which he's starting to use more and more. Uh, he commented that, uh, you know, he, he likes to, you know, see the, the morning data as he enjoys his morning cup of coffee. So he spends about, you know, ten to fifteen minutes just as he's, you know, getting ready for the day. Uh, and I think the, uh, uh, mayor of, sorry, the first selectman of Guilford, Connecticut uh, was similar. I think that he's using it more for, uh, understanding the social media uh, chatter as to the, the major, major issues in the, uh, in the community.
Okay. Um.
Did we get a copy of the presentation? Would you, can you send that?
Uh, yeah, it's part of, it is part of the work session, trustee Lucas, where we can, I'll email it separately.
I, wait a minute.
Yeah, it's all in a work session. Back up. All right, you know, why, why don't we put this, you know, Mr. Shafir, you, you've done an excellent job. We're going to ruminate on it some more. And, uh, we'll, we'll hold this over for two weeks.
Okay.
Thanks.
Enjoy, enjoy your, uh, evening. I guess you're ready to go to bed, huh?
Good morning. Uh, well, the, the coffee's kicking in, so I'll probably have a, I'll have a mint tea to.
Bring it down.
Exactly.
Thank you, sir.
And, uh, I'll see you guys in two weeks.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, what time is it? It is six twenty-three. Uh, rent the registration program, Jerry?
Um, mayor, I worked on a draft I provided to our village attorney and deputy village attorney. They need some time, I'm sure, to take a look at it and tell me how terrible my draft is. But, um, I'm sure they'll have something in a couple of weeks, if not four weeks from now. So I did present them with something.
Bob and Mark, is that, is that a reasonable timeframe?
I think the four weeks is, is more likely, assuming your preference is that we work on the uh, by the H C Z M C first.
Yeah, I think that that's correct.
Probably right.
All right, for four weeks. Dan has his hand up. Dan, but.
I, I sent a note to you, Bob, uh, and I'd like in due diligence on this, uh, and answer on that, on those questions.
Okay, I'm sorry. I must have.
Did you send it to the rest of us?
I sent on village mail, email and copied everybody.
It was, it was like a couple of weeks ago, I think.
Yes.
Would, would you mind sending it again, Dan, just so I, uh?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be happy to try and find it and send it again. Had to do with what, where our existing code says and whether it was, we need a new law or just.
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
I remember. We talked about it last time.
You know, but I'll, I'll, I'll resend that, uh, decided the, the issue and the way I read it, I think we may have not had the right information when we talked about it two weeks ago.
Okay, run a registration program. Zoning strategies, do, do we have any other information on this?
Oh, um, I did talk to, uh, I did talk to our former, uh, consulting planner. Um, Mr. Neil Desai, he's with a new company, um, because he switched over to a new company. Um, he does have time for us to start to work on, uh, order for all affordable housing strategies. Uh, zoning strategies that would include all affordable housing development. Um, and so he was going to connect with me in a couple of weeks. We had that conversation last week, mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are we getting a proposal from him as to what we would be doing and what the cost?
We can. He's very new to his, to his position. So he wanted to, um, he wanted to run it by, um, his employer to see if that was something that, um, they would be interested in taking on. But everyone knows Neil, everyone likes Neil, so that's why I had reached out to him for that, um.
I, I, I don't have a problem, but I, I, you know, um, it would be to find out what the cost would be versus, and we continue when it be five, which has all the other information. So.
Yeah, okay.
Are we, six fifty, we're going to executive session, so let's try and, uh, muddle through here. Uh, three scholarships, we, we, so the, uh, attorney general kicked it to the controller?
That's correct.
Is there a timeframe on it?
Um, no.
Does the controller, that, will the controller be able to parse legal issue?
It's a good question, mayor. Um, well, the interesting part of this is, as you recall, the, we asked the attorney general specifically whether the attorney general's opinion from the seventies is still valid today. Um, I'd be surprised if the controller said, no, the attorney general's opinion isn't valid. But, uh, you know, maybe they will. They, the controller's office does all pie on expenditures.
Hmm.
So maybe, maybe they will. I don't know.
Who, who actually sent it to the controller? Is there somebody in the attorney general's office who does local government or?
There's the, a person in the solicitor general's office who's the chief of the opinions section. That's who sent it.
And he didn't want to make an opinion?
I think it's she, but yes, I, I, I can't tell you what the motivation was. Um, I just know that she sent it.
Okay, so is there a timeframe or?
No.
There's no ti- no legal obligation on the controller to respond. No.
Do we know, do we know who they sent it to in the controller's office?
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's just the harder the question, the longer it takes.
Okay, all right. All right, that's, that's a shame, but hopefully we'll get an answer from the powers that be sometime in the future. Uh, wetlands, we did with our friend, Mr. Burt. Uh, transfer roof station project. We, we don't have any information on it, do we?
That's on hold.
It's on hold. It, it, okay, I'll, I'll ask you about the land. Uh, legal services agreement with Abrams Fensterman. Wha- what is this about?
Uh, that's just, uh, renewing the agreement, same exact agreement, uh, we entered into last year, mayor.
And it's expired?
It expired, that's right.
Okay. Does anybody want to discuss that? I, I, I'm fine with it.
Hello?
What?
I have a question from the top of my head. Bob, I know this is probably the same as the other contract. We can look at it now, but the, the, since the last year, we've done a lot of good work on, and this involves not just us, but the managers and his office and his staff uh, going to, to the insurance when, when needed and they'll, they've been covering that. So is there any modifications to the contract so that we're more in line with that? Because they have been assigning us certain counsel at some point. I think the other contract had, had you directly as the counsel for everything. So anything, I, shouldn't we change that now that we're are doing things a little different? Well, I, that's a question for everybody.
Where insurance is paying for something, we've been working with the insurance companies.
Hmm, we have designated, I, I recall. I remember we looked at this last year and we went step by step. So.
I, I don't understand what the question is.
The question is, I think we, 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 we assign the law firm as our counsel for all litigation, kind of as a blank, any litigation that comes goes to Bob's office. But now we've, we've, we've changed that so that we first really run it to see if it's covered by insurance, make sure it is covered. And then we do have to make, uh, a decision as to whether there's a difference. We, 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 uh, we do that. So essentially we've, we've inserted one step in the middle so that we can so we can save, uh, and lower call, uh, fees. So I think maybe that should be reflective of what we're doing now.
We're already doing that, Victor. When a matter is covered by insurance.
But the contract says it goes to you directly.
Let, let him answer the question, Victor.
When a matter, I'm not charging the village more money than the village needs.
That's not the question.
When the matter is, is covered by insurance, we talk to the insurance company about who should represent the village. And if the, if we want to represent the village, uh, and the insurance company wants us to represent the village, we do. If you want to assign somebody else, they assign somebody else.
At the insurance rates.
At the insurance rates.
Okay. Is that in the contract? Let's check. Let's. Okay, is that in the contract? Let's check. Let's insert that.
I don't know if it's in the contract. We've been doing that for years.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's why I'm offering just to see we can improve what we've been doing, because I think there's a lot of work. And of course, it involves you being helpful on, on trying to, to to do this so that we can go and go back. Effort, and I want this to be reflected. I can take a look. Let me open the contract as you, maybe others have questions. I can open this up. Just pop up.
Can I, can I just, I have just a couple of things. If I can do that while Victor's looking.
Go ahead.
One was nine other clients. The attorneys will not represent any other client before any department board or commission of the village during the term of this agreement. And I think having spent a lot of time with the ad hoc ethics committee, because I was hosting their meetings, ad hoc ethics review, code review committee. It maybe that should be the, maybe the lawyers, like everybody else in the village, has to wait two years. I think that might be consistent. So anybody who's got any affiliation with the village has to take a two-year hiatus before appearing before the village.
I, I think that that's covered in the ethics code because the village attorney is an official of the village. And the ethics code says all officials of the village.
Well, but it's, but the contract just says during the term of the agreement. Okay. The ethics code just says during the term of the agreement?
No.
So you have to wait two years.
Same period that applies to everybody else, yes.
Okay, so this, this is just, this is just saying you can't do it while you're working here.
That's right.
Okay, okay, thanks.
I remember that from when we did the ethics code. We're back when I was young. When we wrote the ethics, it was like two thousand nine. Is there? It, it sounds to be like what Victor's advocating for is already the case.
Well, let, let, let me, let me finish that. I think that because I found it. Share that here. So I think it's here eight. So I'm not asking you to change anything, Bob. I, I know you do it properly, but in, as, just so that it continues to improve. Just to spell it out, say we'll represent the village unless the board of the C's and we, we say at the same rate of the insurance or as, as, however you want to frame it, but I, I would, I would I, I would suggest or ask that we include, spell it out here. Because, for example, I didn't know we were proceeding that way. I, I just and it has, it has been a tremendous effort now, and I think we're all better off how things are being handled now. So let's spell it out. It's my suggestion.
I don't know how to spell out what you want spelled out.
I don't know what you want spelled out.
Is that you, that you will charge us. You say here you're representing us in all litigation. And you, you have the fees up, 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 above. I don't recall. I think it's three fifty, whatever. I don't recall. But, so here we're just designating you automatically backed for everything. And we're, we're, we're not saying what you explained, that it will be at the rate that the insurance cover, insurance covers. Let's go back. If my logic is right, let me see, let me see. All right, let me see. Okay, so we have nature attainer personnel services. Services, non-retainer, that's probably where we have litigation is somewhere. Let me see fees.
Is that steam or smoke?
Here.
Non-retainer services.
So fees is like a three fifty, right?
That's right.
We're saying, and it doesn't spell out that it goes to the insurance. Let's say the fee of the insurance is three hundred. That, that will be the rate you cover. It's not, it's not spelled out. That's what I'm asking.
You can always decide otherwise then.
I, I think what, what the point here is, when, when you were assigned by the insurance company, you'll accept the insurance company's rate. Isn't that the case? What we're talking about here?
Yep. I think the mayor has. Yes, let's say they say three hundred or that's a rate, it'd be three hundred, not three fifty.
When, when they were signed, but when they're being paid by insurance company.
When Bob is covered by the insurance company, correct. I'm sure, I know, I know he's doing it, but I want to spell it out.
Bob, is that okay with you?
Sure.
Can you send the contract with that change, please, for next meeting? Thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, let's get to the stuff that's on for tonight. Go down to new business.
Well, did Victor, I think Victor was starting to say something else, but.
Do you have anything else?
Thank you, Victor.
I did, but.
Oh, go ahead, Nora. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, um, I think that, you know, we're, that number, it's three, two, four. It says provide legal counsel and services related to labor and employment matters when requested by board of trustees and or the village manager. I don't think it should be and or, I think it has to be and. Like it has to be both of us agreeing. I think that's what we had, that's what I thought we were agreeing to last year and the and or got in there. So I think it should just be and, so there's like a, a double check because it is more expensive.
So if the village manager calls and wants to ask us a quick question about a labor matter, he has to bring it to the board of trustees first? Is that what you want?
Well, I mean, I guess the question is maybe over an amount, I mean, maybe over an amount, because we do have labor council, separate labor council and and yours, and your, and your rate is higher than their rate, basically. So I don't know if he calls for a quick question. It's going to be, you know, a portion of an hour or whatever, and that's one thing, but I, I'm just trying to make sure we are watching those tax dollars.
Whatever you want.
All right. Let's move on to a new business that has to be done tonight. Southeast Consortium spelt wrong. But it is consortium. If you don't know what the Southeast Consortium is, the Southeast Consortium is an amalgam of communities around here from Portchester down to Pelham that have banded together to provide recreational services for people with disabilities. People from disabilities, obviously, with disabilities, obviously deserve recreational services and it's a heck of a lot cheaper if we do it as a group than each community has to do it on their own. This is located in the town of America headquarters, so it's very convenient for us. And this is just a renewal of an agreement that, I don't know, the village has been party to for, you know, forty years. Any questions, concerns?
No, I think it's a great service at a great price.
I think it's very important, but question was this, Jerry, was this in the budget?
Oh, yeah.
Forty years.
Budget. We put it in the budget every year.
No, I just, I, I have that pointed out. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Engagement letter for bond council. So, Mr. Fusco, this is your Valley Wick. I, I, correct me if I'm not wrong, this is the same council, he's moved to a different firm?
Yes, from a sole proprietor, he's now entered an agreement with a company, and he now is part of a company. They're maintaining the same fees per engagement.
So, so it's just, we're changing the, the, the name on the contract?
That's correct.
The rates are the same?
The rates are the same.
And we don't have any problem getting out of the old contract?
He was a sole proprietor. He merged with.
I'm sure he'll let himself off the hook.
I hope so.
Everybody okay with this being on?
Yeah, sure.
Well, you didn't know you had a Valley Wick before tonight, did you?
No.
Okay. Purchase of one twenty twenty-two Ford Escape. Jerry, you want to talk about this or, or Dan?
I'm sorry, Mayor, but Mr. Sarnoff wants to talk about this.
Mr. Sarnoff?
Thank you, Mr. Barbario. One of the items that's in our capital budget is a replacement of a vehicle for the building department. Actually, two vehicles. What we're proposing is to turn down the vehicle, which is currently assigned to me, which is a twenty fifteen Chevy Equinox, which is originally assigned to the building department. And assign this new vehicle to me and I'll turn down my vehicle or that, sorry, that vehicle, not my vehicle, to the building department for their use. It's going to replace a, I believe, a twenty fourteen Ford Escape, which has been plagued by transmission gremlins, has very little value left at this point. And, you know, the Chevy Equinox is in very good shape, but I do say so myself in terms of its, of its maintenance.
Any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
To the upgrade of multi-space parking meters on a regular meeting?
Mayor, starting on April fifteenth and up to May fifteenth is our timeline to install the new multi-space meters on the Boston Post Road. It, it has come to my attention that we are plagued with problems on the existing multi-space meters because they were converted from one company to another or from one instrument panel to another. And so at times, many times, we have these multi-space meters go down where they won't accept coins, they won't accept the credit card. And so what I discussed with Chief Simpson was to upgrade the existing parking multi-space meters. We have fifteen of them, not upgrade, but completely renovate those parking, multi-space parking meters with new ones. We're using, and Dan will help me with the, we're using the fund, the trust fund that we have for this. Which has two hundred and sixty-seven or two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in it already. And so what we'll do is we'll be able to upgrade our existing and we'll have the whole, all, all the same technology, all the same equipment, and we'll be able to ensure, for the most part, that we're not missing out on parking fees when these multi-space meters, the older ones, the ones that were converted in the past continue to break down.
Okay.
Can I, how old are the old ones? They're not that old, right?
The conversion, the conversion is maybe, I think, four or five years old. But when we converted it, apparently, that may not have been the best approach.
I thought we, we only installed them like in two thousand and
I think it was two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen when we originally purchased them.
Right.
They, they've been in operation for, you know, seven, eight years at this point. I mean, even under the best of circumstances, their useful life is about ten years and that's you're assuming you got it at the beginning of the act generation of parking meter, but with conversion, it was kind of like putting the proverbial square peg in a round hole.
So what, what saves us, Nora, is a little bit of redundancy. We have two meters in one location. So if one goes down, the other one.
Yeah.
We'll maintain that, but you know, people have, and the judges typically send me the the request to evaluate the, the meters from, from residents and non-residents when they get a ticket and they can demonstrate that the meter was not working. Picture.
It's easy to do, right? No, I know that.
It's easy to do. And I get, I get those, I get to make those calls based on the information I have, which of course Tommy does the research for me before it comes to my desk.
So basically, one of the things we have to consider is we have to be on top of a replacement schedule for parking for the multi-space meters.
Yeah, I think because it's outside, I think because it's electronic, I think because it's, it's, you know, we're, we're not a typical North Carolina, Georgia kind of weather. I'm sure that a lot of that impacts.
You know, I, I noticed, I noticed in Raleigh and in other communities, it's like a little kiosk that you walk into.
They cover it up, right? They cover it up to give it a little shelter.
They give it a little shelter and, you know, at least, you know, when you get your wallet out and you go through your pockets, it's not raining on you.
We talked about that. We talked about that, and that's something we may, we may want to look into. That we would purchase and install ourselves. We did look into that.
Okay.
Have we looked at more than one company for this? Because if it, what we're hearing is, what I'm hearing is that we, you know, we have an obsolescence factor and, but, you know, there must be more than, you know, there must be several companies. Especially, I would say, in the Northeast.
But we're married, we're married to this company that we have to continue with their, with their program. Because the new meters that we just got were from, were from the company. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to make sure that the twenty-three that are out there are all the same. So that we can rely on the connectivity and also that staff is able to use them. It's probably not something we should shop around for and have different types all over the village.
Yeah, but I've looked at pricing in the past and the, the IPS meters are typically less expensive than some of the others I've seen from it's now it's called T two or Parky on or Schlumberger J. So it's
But Dan, you, these are on, these are on the national purchasing thing, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, okay. This is on for a meeting. Everybody's finally putting this on? Okay, me too. All right. Thank you, Steph. I'm going to make a motion that we go into executive session for the following items. Consider this my motion. Tax search area, three one one East Boston Post Road, under section one oh five one D. Village manager performance review twenty twenty twenty-one under section one oh five one F. Appointments for Marine Education Center Advisory Committee under section of the code one oh five one F. And canvassing of police officer civil service list under Public Officers Law Code one oh five one F. And just for a point of order, we're going to do the police officers first so that Chief DeRosa can go home.
So.
Make that motion.
Second.
Augustino. Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Or could you get us on here?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a, Dan, did we get the public safety customer service tool on the agenda? Because I have the
Two F, it's the top of the the second page, the cover, the agenda.
Is that on regular or is that just the chief?
I think it was just on this, because I
Okay.
It wasn't where the other.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor. I don't want to get the chief upset. You know how she is.
All right, see you, see you.